Commissioner Lee, can you hear us better now?
Yes.
Perfect. Commissioner Wagoner?
Here.
Commissioner Maiten?
Present.
And Chair? Vice Chair McLean-Lenzel.
Here. Okay, so tonight's meeting is going to be in a hybrid fashion, both online participants and those of you that have joined us here in the city council chambers. And so we're going to start with approval of the minutes from April, April 25th. Yeah, April 25th. Does everybody, does anybody have any changes to those minutes? No? Okay. I've seen no changes needing to be made. We will approve the minutes as drafted. And now is the chance when people from the, from the audience, citizens, can bring non-agenda items, so things that you want to share with the planning commission that are not on the agenda for tonight.
Where do we get? It wasn't printed. There's a copy, there's a copy of the law out there, but I could make copies, but we're gonna have to stop the date.
Can we just formally say?
Yeah, the only items on the agenda are a community conversation with the conference plan and the board subdivision.
So yeah, so if you're likely here for one of those.
I'm not seeing anybody electronically with their answers on this call.
Okay. So, nothing that's not already on the agenda, then let's move on to the director's report.
Yes, I put together a rather lengthy director's report this month, just updating you on some decisions and notes, including 362nd Avenue and Bell Street, which I think they're having the groundbreaking this Wednesday morning on Bell Street. Deer Meadows subdivision, which is impending Luba litigation. The Parks Code modifications and Parks and Trails master plan amendment adoption that were adopted by City Council recently. And then I also marked some other, one application to note that you'll be hearing next month on July 25th. And then some other long-range planning objectives and some updates on those, including the comp plan, the EOA, which is tied to the comp plan, a clear and objective audit that we just picked off a couple of weeks ago, and the Pleasant Street master plan that's been on again, off again for about four and a half years now. So the only thing I wanted to get some feedback on is the August meeting. Right now, I don't have anything for you for the August meeting, so we could take the month off. It is likely that you'll be getting an invite from the city council to a work session in August on the comp plan. So you probably will have some attendance anyways at a meeting in August, if you can make it. But this would be for your regular scheduled meeting. I cannot make August 22nd, fourth Monday of the month. So we would either have to hold it on a different day or just cancel the meeting. And at this point, I would want something in August, just in case we get a continuance from tonight or from the July 25th meeting, then we would have a placeholder for. So to know if there was other days that people are open to. It's the summer, so it's pretty hard to book.
I'm good with anything, any Monday but the 15th.
So we, we could look at August 29th. If people are open to that for a date that we could just hold, and then if I don't get an item, I probably just cancel it, so you can have the month off in August. This is the 29th, work for everybody?
Works for me.
Commissioners Lee and Tullin?
Works for me.
Okay, well, I'll, we'll officially move it to the 29th, and then I'll let you know we have an item or not.
Do you happen to know the date the city council might be having a comp hearing discussion in August?
I don't think it's been finalized yet, but I, I heard it's tentatively, unfortunately for Darren, it's tentatively on August 15th, I believe, but I'm not the one that schedules the city council hearings or the agendas, so I don't know if that's been finalized.
Okay, thanks.
And that's all I had, unless you have any question, unless you have any questions.
Okay, I'm just a quick question, maybe we take care of this at the end, about chairing July's meeting. Should we, can we do that at the end?
You can do it at the end, or we could do it at the beginning of the July meeting.
Okay, all right, we'll wait there. Okay, so I think we're ready to go on to Shelly for community conversation, the envision Sandy update.
Yeah, so one of the things that we've been doing with the comprehensive plan visioning process is holding these community conversations with very stakeholder groups, community groups or other groups throughout Sandy. And we wanted to hold one with planning commission. So the idea behind this is that, you know, you're, you're not necessarily bringing any technical knowledge or anything like that. It's, it's your experience, your, your ideas, your, your feelings about living and working in Sandy. So we actually have our, I remember our consulting here, Annie's. She's going to be facilitating this community conversation. Um, yeah, so I'll turn it over to you. I'm just gonna.
You're gonna you're gonna have the diaphragm in the.
Sure, it feels rather formal, but I'm more.
We don't have the desk set up for this sort of thing during meetings. If there was a work session, we'd put tables.
Yeah, I don't want to have my back to anyone. I, do you mind if I just?
Set it out.
I just, doesn't feel right having my back to anyone.
Um, thank you. I presume this is how folks on the line can hear me. Yes, okay. Um.
I think you can set up.
Good, thank you. Uh, my name is Annie Smate. I'm a landes planner and a community engagement specialist with 3J Consulting. We are the firm that has been supporting city staff in updating your comprehensive plan and of course, developing the community-wide vision, which is the first phase of the comprehensive plan. And as Shelley mentioned, and probably as you saw in your director's report, there's been a lot of stuff going on for the comprehensive plan the last couple of months. Shelley especially has been hard at work conducting numerous community conversations all over town with a lot of different organizations and clubs. We talked to over 300 Sandy High School students about a month ago, some really exciting stuff. Community conversations, just a little refresher. I know it's also in your packet, but they're pretty informal discussions. They're kind of like a focus group, but they're really meant to be conducted by anyone. You can do it with your friends, your family, your neighbors, your tennis club, you know, what, what have you. We are essentially collecting people's notes and information from these discussions. And we're going to be working really hard to sift through all of the feedback that we get through all these various outreach opportunities. And then basically coding the kind of themes that we're hearing from people's discussions and developing a vision statement. And the vision statement is really what's going to be driving the policy framework and the comprehensive plan. So a lot of outreach and engagement. Um, and as part of doing these community conversations, as Shelley mentioned, we wanted to do one with you. And so I'm really here to just kind of pose the big questions. It's definitely not technical, very much based in your own experience, your own thoughts, and really kind of putting yourself in the shoes of, you know, what brought you here to Sandy and really what do you want to see here in the future? So some pretty basic questions, and I'm happy to kind of dive into it. I'll just start taking notes. But it's really just for you all to kind of throw your personal and professional experiences out towards me and towards us. And just kind of share a little bit about what you love about this community and what brought you here, whether, what brought you here to, to live or to work? And then also thinking about, you know, what are things that you feel are coming down the pipeline that, you know, you want to see change or improve in the community over the next 20 years? So kind of thinking long-term, thinking, you know, in a visionary fashion. Um, so yeah, does anybody have any questions about that process or anything along those lines? Yeah, okay. Um, so as I mentioned, the questions are not complicated, pretty straightforward. I, whenever we do this community conversations, I love to ask people, why did you choose to live here or why did you choose to move to Sandy? So, no, no rhyme or reason in the order, but feel free to kind of share your experience as to why you live here or why you chose to work here.
So you wanted to hear from all the?
Yep. I know, it's kind of fun.
Well, I'll start since you're looking at. I moved here in, to Sandy in 2006. I did that, moving from out of state. And when I got here, we were in a pretty high price of housing. And my office was going to be located in Beaverton. And at the last minute, they changed it to Marine Drive at 108, 108 First. And when I started working there, the, my administrative assistant heard I was looking for a house, and she lived in Sandy. And she said, oh, affordability, nice homes, small town, you, you moved from Tennessee. It should be very familiar to you. You should drive out. So I drove out to Sandy and walked around the house within a day. In 2006, and I've bought another house since then, but that's, that's what brought me to Sandy.
Thanks.
For me, it was a similar situation. We were looking for our first house. And we initially started looking in Sandy because of affordability and what we'd heard about Sandy. But what made us choose Sandy was actually driving the neighborhoods. And when we were out driving the neighborhoods, it was, the kids played at the street and the neighbors waving to you as you drove by, which, you know, was odd for us coming from southeast Portland. And that did not happen all the time, but it was just that friendly feel about the town. You got a little bit of the small-town feel, but there were still things that you, you know, you didn't have to drive far to get what you needed. But it was really that friendliness driving to the neighborhoods that really stole this.
Great.
All right, I guess those of us present are one of the first. So I also moved here in 2006, and I think the draw for me was, I had, I came from Portland, and I loved how close Sandy was to the mountains. So I, I, I say often that Sandy is the best of both worlds. It's, we've got Mountain National Forest in our backyard, and we're an hour from downtown Portland if we want to go into the city. So I love the small-town feel. I love running into my neighbors and people I do business with, grocery store. And I just, I love Sandy.
Great.
All right, Commissioner Tullin or Commissioner Lee?
I'll take the turn. So we came in 2000, and we had been living in Cascade Locks. And we both, my husband at the time worked in Clackamas, so we needed somewhere closer to work. But also really wanted that small-town feeling. So again, it was that feeling that our kids could walk to school and it was going to be okay. And we could walk, pick them up, and we'd enjoy that walk. Feeling like we were surrounded by community rather than just a member of one of the houses on the street.
And when I was moved here in 1960, I had no choice. My parents just brought me. But then I moved away when I was in grade school and came back in 2013. I was planning to work at home, so I was looking for a small community where I could also participate in things like I have been. So this has worked out fairly well. I could not find a house when I moved here, even though I bid way over the price. So I finally found a builder who had a lot and had him build me a house.
Excellent. Thanks. Anything else to add about why you chose to stay or move or?
I chose to stay because I came back to live in a small town, in a small community where there's more interaction.
I, I would say the, the community events, the parades and the Halloween thing for the kids. The new high school is amazing. Yeah, that community feel, all the things that are in the parks, that, all the events that happen.
I have, yeah, and I have to add that I, my kids are known here. And, you know, it's not a lot of places where your children walk down the street and people call them out by name, hi, you know. That is really powerful, having your children be known and knowing that you can walk to the library and hear about your goofy kid, whether it was a good story or a bad. But being known has been a really powerful thing for our family.
That's great. Thank you. Um, you kind of segued very naturally into that next question. But we also like to ask, what makes Sandy special today? So thinking about, you know, what are some of Sandy's most cherished attributes? And, you know, what about being here makes you proud to live here or work, work here? So yeah, what, what makes Sandy special today? What are its like? What makes it an amazing place to live?
Well, what I left out in mind is I moved here in 2006, but I got job transferred at the end of 2013, so I had to move to Chicago in 2014 in January. That job was a public sector job, and then it went private in 2016. And we got a big settlement as a payout for the job. And me and my wife looked at each other and said, where do we want to go from here? And we said, we're going back to Sandy. So we moved back to Sandy in 2016. And the reason for that is probably the same reason today. It's the people.
Yeah.
We, my two daughters had a chance to grow up here. They were born in Tennessee, but they're raised here in Sandy. We came back at 16. We said we want to put them back in the same groups of friends, the same people, our friends. Even though we were gone for two and a half, three years, everything just kind of stemmed right back up and then. And unfortunate for me, my wife passed away a year and a half ago. And all the friends that I had in Sandy, you know, showed up and to support us, and it just reinforced why I wanted to stay in Sandy.
Thanks for sharing.
One way secret today.
Yeah. Thanks for sharing.
I would just add that it's beautiful. I mean, I.
Aesthetically?
Yeah, aesthetically, I, I like the Sandy style, and that, that's all come about in like the last 15 years.
When you say Sandy style, like, tell me what you mean by that.
The architecture that, that we, I remember when we went through that process and it was really involved. There were a lot of community involvement in that, that kind of Cascadian architecture. And it's given Sandy kind of a cohesive look. My friends from Portland now that drive through above the mountain, they're like, what's happening in Sandy? It's really, you know, it's really looking good. And so that, and I, I think that's a source of pride, as well as all the trees. I mean, it just, our mining park is amazing.
I didn't understand that.
Oops.
I understood that.
And, you know, the flower boxes, everything, all the, and since COVID, the fact that the city has invested in these outdoor pavilions is, I mean, again, in that style, is really giving it a sense of place.
That's so great that you mentioned that when we were, Shelley and I were at the high school. We had a bunch of kids tell us about how they love the flower baskets and like the Main Street aesthetic. So we've definitely been hearing a lot of that.
Yeah, and at Christmas or in the dark.
Yeah. What else is working well in Sandy that we are proud of or are kind of the, the community's most cherished attributes?
I think that having an entity like Ant Farm here has been a real pleasure. And what they've added to the community is not something you could get from private business. They are really helping older children, teens who have issues and doing lots of good programs in the community.
I would maybe even take that one step farther, not just local nonprofits, but local businesses.
Yeah, and I think that brings us right back around to that cohesiveness, that nonprofit works with businesses, that, that that the town is small enough that initiating change, people come together and make it happen. And so a nonprofit is not a sole entity. It is an entity inside of those other agencies and businesses.
Great. So some of the newer additions would be the farmer's market really seems to be taking off. And I personally take a lot of pride in our metro, our San, Sam.
Yeah.
Sandy area metro, and I don't know if everybody knows it, but for a long time, there was no fee. And I think we still kept it to a dollar, right? So that, you know, making transportation available to our citizens and our local businesses pay for that.
Yeah.
That happens, so I'm proud of that.
You stole my word for that. So I was gonna say transportation.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So specifically Sam.
Yeah.
Yeah, excellent.
It's, and it, it just keeps getting better and better.
Yeah.
At least in, in my experience with it and what, you know, I've been on this commission four years and it's, it's grown tremendously just in that time.
Yeah, excellent.
I don't know if anybody else is as proud as our Wi-Fi network, as we are in our house told, but we are really fond of Sandy net.
I remember moving in and them saying, I said Sandy who?
Yeah.
And what is that?
Yeah.
I said, oh, it's our internet service, and I've had nothing else.
Yeah, we've certainly heard that. It is definitely, should definitely be a source of pride. There's very few communities in Oregon that have Wi-Fi like that as a, as a utility essentially. Yeah, excellent. Great. Any? Any other thoughts, things to add, what we love about Sandy today?
I was just thinking that one other bullet I had was that in 2006, I left Sandy a lot to go shopping. Not necessarily groceries, but just stuff.
Yeah.
I don't have to leave Sandy that much anymore as I think about it. I do still occasionally, you know, but there's a lot more diverse selection of, of businesses in Sandy operating services for.
Great.
And, and more restaurant choices.
Yeah.
Our eateries.
Yes.
Had one that actually left Portland and moved to Sandy because the owners moved to Sandy.
Oh. Great, more restaurants. Excellent. Um, kind of the, the other side to the conversation is, so this is what we love about Sandy today. And thinking about the future, thinking about our comprehensive plan and the policy framework within which the city governs. You know, what do, what about Sandy would you like to change in the future? What can improve? Um, so there are like multiple ways of asking this question. But it could be, yeah, as I mentioned, what do you want to change in the future? What do you want to improve? Is there anything on the horizon that you think we should be really considering in the comprehensive plan or just in developing policy around a variety of topics that affect livability? And then, you know, how has Sandy changed over the last 10 years or so? And, you know, what changes have you seen in Sandy that you like and that you want to see more of in the future? And what are changes that you don't like? So yeah, thinking about the future.
So I think Sandy housing has become even less affordable the longer that I've lived here because the prices are going up all the time. And I think we really need to have a plan for more middle housing, more affordable housing so that other people can enjoy, enjoy with us in this community.
Great.
Uh, yeah, a couple of traffic.
Yeah.
Uh, it's going to be a big one, I think. Finding the solution to traffic over the mountain is going to be huge. The other one that I'd like to see is more local jobs. Especially, like, family wage jobs.
Say it again, sorry?
Especially family wage jobs.
Family wage jobs, yeah.
I decided something, but. Just so for the benefit of everybody, all the commissioners and anybody else in the room that's interested, as part of the comp plan and the EOA, which is the Economic Opportunities Analysis, we're looking at land. In addition to that, we actually just signed a contract with a different firm to do an economic opportunities analysis and strategic plan. So they're going to be taking the work from the comp plan and the EOA and then transforming that to actually a strategy on recruitment. So that just happened within the last month or so. So we'll have more information for all of you as that moves along. That's one.
So I, I want to make sure you're asking both the things we're concerned about and the things that were, that have been happening that we're excited about?
Um, things that you want to see change in the future.
Oh, change in the future, okay. Yeah, so the affordability issue is a concern. I, I also would second the, the lack of what are the need for more living wage jobs? And then kind of tied to that, the traffic, not only up, up the hill, but as we have more and more people moving here, you know, the more of them that can work in the area, they're not going to have to commute, so.
Great.
I can only echo what they were saying, just from, from my lens. As my, if I were, if my kids, 10 years ago, my kids were younger, I would say different things than I say today, but traffic is a real concern for me as well. Just in-town livability, I think downtown is perfect for walkability.
Yeah.
I don't think where the housing is stretching outside of the downtown, like the, the one that we're talking about
Yeah.
later today, but everything on the other side, I think we, we could do a better job for, for, I guess, pedestrian traffic flow, sidewalks, maintaining them, getting them up. Infrastructure, everybody talks about infrastructure. For, you know, the population that's moving here, do we have the schools and the resources? And what's hard for me is that I, I can't see that in the comprehensive plan because we need people to move to Sandy so we can get the tax dollars so that we can start to build infrastructure. So it's, it's one, is it the chicken or the egg kind of conundrum? But making sure we have our eye on infrastructure is important in the comp plan to understand, you know, with all the, you know, the, the, the housing affordability issues that we have today, that I think the state has implemented some, you know, some laws to change that so we can bring more affordability into towns with duplexes. But that's just going to create more people, which is good. But more people need a place to drive and a place to walk, a place to shop, a place to eat. So we really have to be concerned about building that long-term. And then we do a really good job with this, which is trees, but the more we build, the more trees come down. And part of the aesthetic of Sandy is that backdrop. And I would, I for one would, would hate to see it go away.
Yeah.
Just for the, the means of more building. So how do we, how do we incorporate stringent rules around tree retention? And, and natural habitat areas, while we continue to build and grow in Sandy and expand our, our urban boundary.
Yeah.
I think we also need to have a climate lens because with the drought and the changing climate, we are even that more vulnerable to wildfire. So we need to build those kinds of safety conditions into our planning and looking at subdivisions and other areas of our city, making them more safe from wildfire.
A big component of the comprehensive plan update is a focus on resiliency efforts around natural hazards.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Maiten said about the need to, I, I think we could improve our, our biking and
Yeah.
pedestrian access, and especially as these developments go out, getting those folks to be able.
More connected.
I would also second that, that one of the main things about Sandy is its natural environment. And we are a tree city.
Yeah.
So I think there's a lot of pride in that, but I think it also has health benefits.
I would also add, ensuring that we continue to have community spaces. The, like, the farmer's market was kind of mentioned earlier, but, you know, if somebody were to choose to develop that lot later, you know, where is a central location where we can hold that farmer's market? Having community spaces for community events.
Great. Anything else from those online or in the room?
All my thoughts, I can only echo everybody else, so.
Great. Um, okay, well, that's, that's, that can be it. We are having these kind of informal discussions with, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of different people in the community. For folks in the room, if you are interested in these community conversations and you yourself have a group or a club or organization, or you meet with your neighbors once a week, there's actually a community. Um, there's actually a community conversations kit on the project website. So if you go to the city of Sandy's website and search envision Sandy twenty fifty, it'll bring you to the project website. Um, and there's a kit that you can download and it'll tell you exactly what you need to do or what are the questions to ask and how to take the notes and where to send the notes. Um, but they're essentially all going to myself and Shelley. Um, and we're gonna be spending a lot of time this summer kind of reviewing all of that uh and working with our uh volunteer community advisory committee members to develop the draft vision statement for your city's comprehensive plan. Um, so a little plug for anyone that wants to do a community conversation or ask these questions with their own friends and family. Um, please do so. Anyone can do it. Um, so that is all from me. Um, thank you. Notes here and I'll take a little photo of the um whiteboard as well.
And then I also just wanted to add, we're also gonna have a presence at the mountain festival.
Oh, yeah.
Um, we're gonna have uh quite a few different kinds of engagement activities for the president to interact with. Um, to make sure that we're capturing as much feedback as we can get.
Shelley has also been to a number of farmers markets in the last couple of weeks with our community advisory committee members. Um, so go find Shelley at the farmer's market and the mountain festival and talk all things comprehensive plan. Great.
Yes, your outreach has been really visible in the community. Good job. Okay. So.
Commissioner Lee answered.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Lee.
Um, I have a question of Kelly before we launch into the old business. When I was on the council, we talked about maybe changing some of the timing for um testimony that came in by allowing uh more time for it to be reviewed before hearings. Um, one of the times mentioned was even five o'clock the day before. I wonder if the city council or anyone is working on that.
So, okay, Commissioner Lee, are you referring to the thirty page document that we gave him two hours ago?
Not specifically, but uh we often get testimony at the very end of just before the hearings. So I'd like to see there be some distance between the hearing and the end of the testimony acceptance in the future. Not specific to this project, though, though this is an example.
Um, I'll let Kelly do that first in a more broad sense, but um because I'm chairing the committee tonight or the meeting tonight, I am going to allow for um some time. I I think getting things a couple of hours beforehand or less than three hours ahead of time. To read through it and look over it. So I am going to, after we excuse everybody that doesn't need to stay for this next piece whilst I do judicial piece, I have to give all the commissioners a chance to to fifteen, twenty minutes to read through.
I'll I'll let our city attorney speak to the legality of when you can cut off testimony.
But thank you. I I just want to um address the issue generally in response to Commissioner Lee's comments. The reality is, is you really can't cut off materials, uh, can't set a deadline for when materials are submitted in a quasi judicial context, because when you think about it, you're gonna take testimony tonight, right? And that's a form of evidence. There are many different kinds of evidence. Some is written, some is verbal. It all goes into the record and your decision is based on the evidence in the record. Um, so submitting written testimony at the last minute is really very di- uh, I'm not very different from a legal perspective from receiving verbal testimony at the last minute, which of course you will probably receive tonight. Um, it does make it difficult if you receive long written documents. Um, but what you can do is either what you're proposing to do tonight and and recess for a few minutes to allow people time to review the materials. Or go ahead and close the record, but then continue the hearing, um, you know, for another two weeks to your next meeting or something. Uh, if time allows and make your decision then, so that would give you plenty of time to review all of the information in the record. But the reality is if somebody shows up at the hearing tonight with a twenty page document, they can submit it. And it's the same thing is going on at length in verbal testimony. So unfortunately, while it's it's frankly inconvenient uh at best. Um, there's not much you can do about it from a legal perspective.
Thank you.
The only other thing I would add to that is I think what you could do if you find that the amount of written testimony is too burdensome, I would always help in instead of making a rush decision to continue, to do a continuance.
Yeah.
I think in this um case, I do think if you were to take like a fifteen minute pause and allow everybody to read the first uh, three and a half pages, or it's actually only three pages, and then to just kind of peruse to the rest, I I think it would be adequate.
Yeah.
Um, but yes, we have received written testimony in the past that I would agree is too much for somebody that considers that a fifteen to twenty minute.
Yeah, and I, Chris, uh, attorney queen, I I agree. I I think or I appreciate your um information. I do know that, you know, the applicant's presentation is limited to twenty minutes and and then we have these little three minute, ten minute things. And when we get a really big document like this that takes more than twenty minutes. And I I just don't want the commissioners to have to engage in conversation and decision making without being fully informed. So I I like the idea of taking that a recess. Um. Kelly, would you suggest the recess be that just taking fifteen minutes to give the commissioners a chance to look over this? Now or at some other point in this process?
Um, I mean, you could either do it now or you could go through the presentations and allow the public to speak.
Okay.
If anybody wants to go home or.
Okay.
Log off.
Okay.
And then at the end of that, you could give a pause for ten or fifteen minutes.
Okay.
That's that's what I would suggest, just in case I see a baby in the room.
I appreciate that, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, um.
Although it's a very well-behaved.
Right now, yeah. Okay, so um the way that this is going to work is um the applicant is given a, is given fifteen minutes to make their pres- or I'm sorry, twenty minutes to make their presentation. And then the public gets to testify. Um, and there will be for the for the development undecided or against the development. So we'll have three different um parts. And then the applicant has a rebuttal piece as well. So I guess at this point, I open the public hearing, state the land use file number is twenty one dash zero two one. And the time of the hearing being opened is at seven ten. Right, first um call for any abstentions from the planning commission? See none? Uh, any conflicts of interest from the planning commission? Okay. Let's see, let's uh, I need to ask if there's been any ex parte contact, including any site visits or use of virtual maps.
But Chair, I did take a drive down Bornstead. I did not stop. I just drove by.
Right, anybody else?
No, but thank you for providing uh maps in Southport.
Yeah, I would too, maps as well. Okay, um. Call for any challenges to the members of the planning mission. If you bring a challenge, to bring a challenge, if you are joining us in person this evening, you can play, you can raise your hand and wait to be recognized. If you're participating online, click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you are participating via telephone, dial star nine and that raises your hand and wait to be recognized. If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If you, if your issue is not raised at this hearing, you might not be able to raise it later in an appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved according to the applicable criteria. Or should include the proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an act, action of damages in circuit court. Okay, we're gonna call on staff Emily Merrick to give us a staff report.
All right, I'm gonna share my screen. And I'll apologize upfront, I am sick. Um, so my voice is a little bit um scratchy and I may cough or sneeze. All right, and can you see the screen? Okay, so uh, tonight we are reviewing the Bornstead views subdivision. Um, just a quick vicinity map so everybody's on the same page. Is that is at the south end of town, south of the existing Cascadia Village Development and just east of Marshall Ridge, which is one of the uh newer subdivisions that is kind of just completed recently. This is just a zoom in of that property. Um, so you can see like uh where Maple Street ends there, that's Marshall Ridge. And then um the street stubbing down from the north is April Parkway in Cascadia Village. So just to briefly go over the proposal, um, it's a forty-three lot subdivision. The lots will contain either single-family homes or duplexes and they all meet that minimum seventy-five hundred square foot lot size. Uh, the proposal includes extending Maple Street through the site to the east and extending April Parkway through the site to the south. The proposal includes connecting to the existing sewer main in Jurger Street, which is just directly north of this proposed subdivision. And then removal of seven hundred and nine trees from the property. Here's the tentative plat map, just to show you the layout. Um, so again, you can see Maple Street extending through and April Parkway extending down south. Um, and then as well as two new north-south streets. The review procedures for this one, it's a type three subdivision. It has um some steep slopes on it, so it has a type three hillside development that runs concurrently. Um, a type two tree removal and then six type three variances, which I will go over um each of those separately. And so we did uh notice the public as well as um affected agencies and then put the notice in the post as um the Sandy post as required. We received six public comments initially. Um, so they did apply originally um a year ago, they submitted an application or a little over a year ago. And um that was scheduled for um the October Planning Commission hearing, but was canceled. Um, at that point, it was a forty-two lot subdivision and we received six public comments that are part of the record. Um, with this notice that we just sent out, we received one additional public comment. And specific to this forty-three lot subdivision, the main topics from all seven comments were um mostly about increased traffic. Um, the presence of the creek and wetlands, loss of trees in nature, and then infrastructure concerns. And the property was annexed in twenty nineteen. Um, and as part of the um annexation, there were four conditions um of annexation approval that needed to occur prior to future development of the property. Um, the first to relate to mapping, um, and then applying the the flood and slope hazard overlay. Um, the third relates to uh a trip cap, basically either a trip cap or a lot cap. Um, in this case, it was written as forty-three single-family lots. Um, and they are proposing forty-three lots. However, as we know with the um pass, passing of uh House Bill two thousand and one, those lots can now be either single-family or duplex. So it's really just forty-three lots at this point. Um, they also needed to confirm that the conditions associated with a Clackamas County file had been fulfilled. That was just about a historic root seller and that's been taken care of in the staff report. So looking at the timeline, because this one, like I said, um, they submitted it as a forty-two lot subdivision on May sixth of twenty twenty-one. So just over um a year ago, the Plan Commission hearing was scheduled for October twenty-fifth. The staff recommendation for that um proposal was denial for um a number of different reasons. So the applicant asked that the hearing be postponed um or canceled at that point and postponed so they could submit an updated proposal um addressing some of uh staff's concerns. And so they submitted that updated um proposal uh some, some of the documents at the end of April and then other items um towards the end of May. So one thing to keep in mind is that Oregon does have what's called the goalpost rule. And so um the analysis that uh, you know, that you'll find in the staff report and that we'll be going over tonight is based on the code that was in place at the time that they submitted. So that was May sixth of twenty twenty-one. So since then, we've had four ordinances that have had code amendments um that have been adopted. And those uh don't apply with the exception of House Bill two thousand and one, which is a a state bill, and so that does apply. Um, so those four code amendments were the code amendments related to House Bill two thousand and one. Um, code amendments related to chapter seventeen one hundred and chapter seventeen eighty-six, which were both adopted um recently by emergency. And then um repealing chapter seventeen sixty-four, which was uh planned developments. So I'm gonna start by going over the six requested um type three variances. So the first variance is to allow the north side of Maple Street between Street A and April Parkway to exceed four hundred feet. So they have it um at approximately one thousand and thirty feet and our um our code requires a maximum local street block of four hundred feet. So the main reasons I've circled there in kind of um red and green is that there's already an existing development to the north and that existing development only stubbed April Street down or April Parkway. Um, they didn't stub an additional street. Um, I don't know what that street is there that lines up with like lot four and five. But that one, as you can see, wasn't stubbed down nor was um the corner. And then the area circled in green there, um, the dashed green line is the flood and slope hazard overlay. So there really isn't um a place that the applicant could uh extend another street to the north. Um, they could stub a street to the north and then, you know, eventually if that subdivision to the north changes or, you know, something happens. Um, potentially it could could be punched through, but that's somewhat unlikely. So um, we are recommending approval of um the requested block length due to the fact that it it's due to existing conditions and to protect the the wetlands and natural area. Um, similarly, they've asked for a variance to allow the south side of Maple between Street A and Street B to exceed four hundred feet. So this one's at about seven hundred, um, well, probably exactly seven hundred and twenty-one point three five feet. Um, and that, the reason for that is that the areas there in yellow and blue are steep slopes, so they exceed twenty-five percent. And then um you can also see that there is this uh uh a stream that runs through the property, you know, at that angle there. And that would be um, you know, uh, where one of us, another north-south street could potentially go. So, given the existing steep slope and the existing stream, we are also recommending approval um of the variance to block length for the south side of Maple Street. The third variance that they've requested is um another variance related to block length. And this is for blocks that exceed six hundred feet. Our code requires a bicycle and pedestrian accessway. Um, so in this case, the, again, the north side of Maple Street between Street A and April Parkway exceeds six hundred feet. So the code would want to see um a bicycle and pedestrian accessway go through. Um, so we are recommending um approving that requested variance, but requiring a connection um between uh tax lots ten and eleven that would connect up to a future cul-de-sac um and help provide connectivity for that cul-de-sac. That was based on um our city engineers' recommendation, essentially to extend um the proposed trail that I'll talk about in the next slide um to the north as well um through that uh, the um flood and slope hazard area and then into that, connect to that cul- cul-de-sac in the future. Um, the fourth one is that the same um to not provide the biking pedestrian accessway on the south side of Maple Street between Street A and Street B. They are proposing a six-foot wide um soft surface trail that would be a gravel trail through the tract A, which is the detention pond. Um, the reason that this doesn't meet our code is that our code is very specific that the bike pad accessway has to be ten foot, uh, ten foot wide paved path within a fifteen-foot wide tract or right-of-way. Um, like I mentioned before, due to um the existing uh slopes. Um, and there's some retention trees in the area as well as the stream. It doesn't make sense to put in a paved, um, you know, paved trail, but um, so we are recommending approval of this variance, but also recommending that that six-foot um wide soft surface trail through ta- tract A is required as proposed. So they are already proposing this. Uh, fifth variance is to allow the lots along Bornstead Road to face the internal street network. Fifth variance is to allow the lots along Bornsted Road to face the internal street network rather than Bornsted Road. So our code would require these lots to face a transit street, and Bornsted Road is a transit street. But rather than that, the applicant's requesting to face Street A internally. And this is, we get this request quite a bit, and we are recommending approval. We in fact got the same request, I believe, from Marshall Ridge across the way. But our recommended condition is that, is that you would require the applicant to add additional design elements and decorative fencing along the Bornsted Road-facing sides of lots fourteen through eighteen, and that would match what's what occurred at Marshall Ridge and what's been conditioned with similar variance requests in other subdivisions around town. And then finally, the sixth and final variance that was requested was a variance to allow up to an eight-foot-tall retaining wall in the front yard of Lot 27. So you can see there, it's listed as a four-foot to eight-foot-tall retaining wall as needed to protect trees. So that clump there circled at the top of Lot 27 is about, I think, you know, ten or so of the proposed retention trees, and that wall, I believe, would would help protect the trees. And also, I think it's intended to help stabilize the road or hold up the road. So we are recommending approval for the retaining wall on Lot 27, which is in the front yard of the lot, to exceed four feet and allow up to the eight-foot retaining wall as detailed. And we, we don't need to process that for tract A because tract A doesn't technically have a front yard. It's just the stormwater detention, and that has to be fenced in separately through a different part of the code. Now on to everybody's favorite topic, trees. So here's just a close-in again of the existing site. The applicant hired a project arborist to go out and inventory trees on the site that you can see here. So the green ones are the trees that they're proposing to retain. The yellow ones are the trees that meet our retention criteria, and then the gray ones are trees that don't meet the retention criteria. For whatever reason, they might be too small, or they might be in poor condition, or they might be an invasive species or something like that. So just to kind of circle the proposed retention trees, you can see that most of them are along the north property of that line there. There's a few along the east property line, and then there's a clump in the north side of Lot 27, kind of in the middle of the site. These are those same retention trees with their critical root zones, which is one foot per one inch diameter or breast height of the trees. So if you have a twelve-inch diameter or breast height tree, then the critical root zone would be twelve feet from that trunk in all directions. So as you can see, a number of the trees along the north and east property lines that are being proposed have critical root zones that are on the adjacent properties to either the north or the east. So just a quick summary of the tree proposal. The minimum retention requirement for the site, based on its net acreage, is thirty-eight healthy trees, eleven inches diameter at breast height or greater, and likely to grow to maturity. The applicant is proposing to retain that minimum thirty-eight trees. The inventory was conducted in July of 2020. The third-party arborist review occurred. He went out to the site in June of 2022 and evaluated the thirty-eight trees to make sure they were still in good condition. All of them were, except for one that had died since the July 2020 inventory. So that one is no longer eligible for retention. And then he identified an additional thirteen trees that can't be adequately protected by the root protection zone on the subject property. So those are the ones I had shown in the last slide, where the critical root zone extends onto the neighboring property. And in some cases, a large percent of the canopy also extends onto the neighboring property. So if the neighbors to the, to the north or to the east were to come in and either like, you know, dig up their yard or in the case where it's an undeveloped property, if they're to come in and develop the property, or if a branch fell and they, you know, got annoyed, and they could limb up the tree to the property line on their side. So what the third-party arborist is saying here is that they can't really be guaranteed to grow to maturity based on the fact that they can't be fully protected just by protecting them on the subject property. And so kind of the result of all of this is that we are in need of an updated tree retention plan. And I will get back to that. So now I'm going to go over the recommendations. So overall, we are recommending approval of the subdivision with the conditions that are outlined in the staff report. We're also recommending approval of all six of the requested type-three variances, again with the conditions that we're recommending in that staff report. We have some additional recommendations, most of which deal with trees. So we are recommending that a majority of the retention trees be located in separate tree retention tracks. So this is what occurred with Marshall Ridge across the way, and it seemed to have worked pretty well in subdivisions where they are not preserved in the tract, but rather have been preserved in backyards. We almost inevitably get follow-up requests from the new homeowner to take the trees down, or they're just removed illegally. So we are hoping to kind of proactively prevent that by placing as many as possible of the retention trees in a separate tract so that it's not owned by an individual, it's not on the lot that their house is on, and it poses less of a hazard to their house, which is what they come back in claiming is happening, and then they want to take it down. So to do this, we have a couple suggestions. One is to increase the size of tract A, which is that stormwater detention tract, to include the clump of retention trees that are on the north end of Lot 27, so that it becomes a joint storm detention facility and tree protection tract that would be dedicated to the city. Another way to do this would be to create a separate tree protection tract that would be owned and maintained by the HOA or another private owner in that same area. So to do that, so Lot 27 was required to have street frontage, twenty feet of street frontage, which is why it has that twenty feet of street frontage on Maple. And to accomplish splitting that tract off, which would be along Maple, it would no longer have that twenty feet of street frontage. So we're recommending approval of two variances to allow the flag portion of tax lots nineteen and twenty-seven to only have ten feet of frontage on Street A with that total combined width of twenty feet, as it's already detailed. So this is effectively the same as what they're proposing. It's just rather than have Lot 19 have a twenty-foot flag with access easement for Lot 27, we just have two ten-foot flags. So this is a diagram kind of showing what we're going for here. So again, the north part of Lot 27 would become a tree protection tract, possibly connected to tract A and dedicated to the city along with tract A or kept in private ownership as a tract B. And then that dotted, or that dashed line down in the flag of Lot 19 would just split that flag into two flags so that Lot 27 and Lot 19 would both have ten feet of frontage on Street A there. And then again, recommending that those variances just be granted to allow ten feet instead of twenty to help protect these trees. Another location where we would like to see a tree protection tract is, and as well as a stream and wetland protection tract, is between lots ten and eleven there. So that's where the wetland has been identified, and it's where the intermittent stream flows through. It's marked off, as you can see, an image on the right on Lot 11 there. That dashed black line is an easement for the stream and wetlands. We would prefer to see this as a tract, and the reason being just to make it more clear that it's not something that the owner of Lot 11 could then go and fill in or, you know, do something, or the owner of Lot 10, cut down the trees or something like that. So it's just, again, an easier way to keep it as a separate lot that, so that we can avoid some of that future conflict of people wanting to come in and cut down the trees after the fact. And so these would be fenced along those, the Lot 11 and the Lot 10 property line to make it clear that it's a separate property, and it's not part of those properties. And then the final recommendation, this is an interesting thing that sort of came up. They're proposing three fire turnarounds on the three stub streets to the south, so Street A, Street B, and then April Parkway. They all dead-end currently, and will, will continue to be dead-end until the property to the south develops, at which point they would be punched through. Until that time, the fire code requires either a fire, temporary fire turnaround or that the houses be sprinklered. So they're proposing these temporary fire turnarounds, which you can see are kind of nestled between two driveways. And at the time that the property to the south develops, those turnarounds would actually go away. Those easements would go away, and it would need to revert back to like curb, planter strip. The sidewalk would already be in place, and then, you know, landscaping on the paved portions that we don't get stormwater enough onto the sidewalk. The question is, who pays for that? And we actually don't know historically how this has been done, or if it even has been done, but it would by code need to revert back because our code only allows the twenty-four-foot driveway, not, not, you know, in this case, they're showing probably, you know, I don't know, forty-foot driveway or something like that on each of those lots. So we are recommending that basically this, this cost be split between the developer of this property and the future developer of the property in the south so that when that property in the south develops, there would be funds collected already, plus they would, the developer to the south would would pay, pay as well into the fund to revert this back to a typical streetscape with the curb and the landscape planner and street trees and sidewalk, and then the yard. So that concludes the presentation. There was one thing that I forgot on, just go back to the slide. On this slide here, in connection to these variances, our code in the fence section does require that any through lot have a gate on the, in the rear yard. So they're requesting here to flip the front to Street A, and then the rear yard would be Bornsted. The code, our code requires that that Bornsted Road frontage would have a gate in the fence, and that is because the adjacent sidewalk and street trees are the responsibility, the maintenance responsibility of the adjacent property owner. And so that, that gate provides access, and that's something that I missed when I was doing the code review, but it is required by our code, so we would be recommending inserting that in into the Chapter seventeen-seventy-four discussion. So that concludes the staff presentation. And I believe I can answer any questions if you have them now, or we can come back to them later.
Emily, I have a couple of questions.
All right.
My notes here. And maybe they're not, if you can just educate me a little bit. On that plat map where you have the, where the houses face from fourteen through eighteen, can you tell me the way Lot thirteen and Lot twenty-three, which direction those homes will face? Will they be facing Maple or Street A?
All right, hold on, I'm just pulling that back up. Lot thirteen and twenty-three. You know, I'm not sure, the applicant can probably answer that. They, in theory, they could face either, either one. I don't know if they detailed it on a different sheet. Let me see, if I can find anything. I can't really tell from the sheets I have up. I'd have to pull up the plan set, but I'm sure that the applicant would know. But again, in theory, they could face either way.
Then that was one, and I'll get that from the applicant, thank you. On variant C, on the image, there's a, there's a line with an arrow between lots eight and nine. I'm assuming that's a proposed breakpoint. Is that, what that arrow represents, like a midway where?
Yeah, that, that's just sort of a visual representation that's not intended, that it would go there, just sort of, that would be the mid-block, and that would be what our code would want, is some sort of mid-block connection. But like I mentioned, there's nothing really to connect it to in the subdivision to the north. So we're recommending not requiring that.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to verify that.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then, same question. I have one more I wrote down here. I'll find it though. Oh, the, the special variance, so variance F, to allow up to an eight-foot-tall retaining wall. And then you had recommended approve that. But I didn't see anything about landscape around that wall. So I was thinking if it's a supporting wall for, for road, would there, would there be a means to put required landscaping in front of it, especially if it's an eight-foot wall and it's block? Is that something that we can do or no?
Yeah, it's certainly something you could do through the variance process. I believe, the applicant, you can go into this further, but I believe that the wall would be kind of sunk in so that the road would be above the wall so that actually from the street, you wouldn't really see the wall. You would just, you probably would need a safety fence of some sort on top of it so that people didn't fall into the front yard of Lot 27 there. But yeah, so I think, I don't think the wall would actually be visible from the street, but that section would still have the typical planter strip and street trees.
Just, just something for the benefit of people in the room. If somebody is on the microphone speaking, they cannot hear you speak in the room. So you just, you'll just have to wait until they're done. Otherwise, I can mute them if they're like going on real long, but I prefer not to do that.
Emily, just one last question on that retaining wall. You said it's below grade. I was under the impression it was being used for tree retention, like, like I was assuming it was like wind blockage or something, but it's all subgrades, you're saying?
The applicant could go into it more, because I don't know the engineering specifics, but my understanding is that it would be like bolstering up the road, and then rather than doing sort of a, you know, like a gradual slope back, which would then potentially cause fill around the retention trees, which is not good. They would just do the wall so that there would be no grading within the critical root zone of those retention trees. They could probably elaborate on that further with more engineering perspective.
It's like, it's like if the lots are here, I'm pretty sure. These are the lots, and this is the road surface. From the road surface, like you'd see as little fence.
Just got there.
But the retaining wall would be visible from the lot, but not from the, from, okay.
And then one, my, my last one more is a why question for you, and it's around the additional recommendations, number four. And this is just for my own edification and understanding. You mentioned splitting the cost with the, with the future developer of the south property when it's, when it's, when it's developed. And I was just wondering from, if I wanted to buy that property, why would I have to pay to have that turnaround removed? Shouldn't it be on the developer who's, who's building their homes right now? Why would that be? Why would you recommend that that be a split between the person who's not even bought the property on the south side? And again, there's, I don't know if there's a right or wrong answer to that. I'm just asking the question for my own edification.
I don't think there really is a right or wrong answer. That's certainly a possibility that, that you could, you know, that you could require that the, the current developer pay for those to be removed and the curb and landscaping and tree trees reinstalled and all of that. We just kind of thought, you know, because it's, in Sandy, we sort of have the developer, development pays for itself thing, and we thought that it just seemed kind of more fair to split the cost between the two developers. Something presumably, the, you know, the parcel to the south would develop in a similar manner, similar number of houses on it. So that was just kind of what we had come up with, with more, like more of kind of a fair way maybe to divide it, but you could, you could recommend, you know, whenever you want.
Well, thank you for answering all my questions. Those were the only things I had left, so appreciate it. Good report.
Commissioner Pullen or Commissioner Lee, you have any questions?
No.
No.
We're gonna?
No.
Thank you for asking good questions. Okay, before we move, are you done, Emily? Okay, yeah. Move on to the applicant's presentation. I just want to let the people in the audience and people online who are interested in speaking. So the applicant will be given fifteen minutes to make their presentation, twenty. I was just reminded twenty. I had it two different ways here, so twenty minutes to make their presentation. And then what we'll do is we'll let the people who are in favor of the proposal will have each three minutes, and then those who are opposed to it will each have three minutes. And then those that are neutral will also have three minutes. And then we go back to a staff recap and recommendation, and then a rebuttal by the applicant, which can be up to ten minutes. So I just wanted to let the public know that that's kind of, that's the direction we're going. So thank you for your patience. So let's hear from the applicant. Just send the presentation.
Did you already read the?
Oh, you know what?
Hold on.
That was done before Emily's.
Oh.
Report.
Yeah.
For any extensions or ex parte or anything.
Yeah. I did all that. You may not have been in here.
Oh, I was here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that was, that was all taken. Did you have a challenge?
I kind of remember Jerry reading it. It was a longer spiel.
Yeah, I should have. Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, he gave me his long word.
Okay.
Hi, thank you. My name is Tracy Brown. I'm a landes planner representing the owner, Mac Even, who's wanting to develop this project. In addition tonight, we have Ray Moore, the engineer for the project, Garrett Stevenson, the project attorney, Peter Von Oss with Tarrigan Associates, who's the arborist. And I believe online we might have Mike Ard and Terry Flanagan. Are they there?
Yeah.
Okay. Trey Flanagan is with Tarrigan Associates. He's the owner of Tarrigan. So again, thank you very much. I guess in general, we, you know, appreciate the staff recommendation. A couple of clarifications, you know, we're sorry that to submit the materials so late. You know, it is always a challenge with these projects. You know, we get the staff report seven days before. You know, there's a weekend in there and, you know, we need to digest everything. And we presented this. Most of the items in my document that I prepared are really language from the staff recommendations. It's lengthier than it really needs to be. But I wanted to include all the language that staff had proposed in order to evaluate it. And, you know, so you can look at and evaluate it. So with that, as Emily mentioned, there's several variances that are proposed. One of the variances to the trail to the south. You know, the, it's basically the variance is saying that we're requesting not to build that. And as Emily pointed out, we're, we're proposing to vary the standard. We're proposing to build that trail to the south, but vary the standard. So maybe a technicality, but we're, we are proposing to include that a trail, but just a different trail than would typically be required by the code. So what I'd like to do is just refer to my document first of all. And then all, as I go through that, I'll ask Ray Moore to come up to talk about some engineering items. And then Peter to come up to talk about the arborist, reprised arborist report. So this document was intended to look at the various staff recommended conditions. And that's really where the, in a sense, the rubber meets the road. So we have, there's an approval that's being recommended, but all the details are contained in those conditions. And the language in those conditions matters in terms of how the property is allowed to be developed. So the, the way this document is organized in black text is the recommended conditions out of, right out of the staff report. The blue text, which I've written myself, is kind of a little bit of discussion about those conditions. And the red text is recommended changes to the conditions. So I'll just kind of jump right in. I'll try to go through this pretty quickly so there's enough time to ask questions and further discussion. So the first one has to do with the standard for the road along Bornstead Road. The project engineer has been in communication with the Cockmouth County. And so we're, what we're asking in this one is that the standard, that the condition be modified to allow some flexibility based on Cockmouth County standards, rather than putting in exactly a five foot dedication and a 35 foot half street, those numbers. Because Cockmouth County may not need the entire five feet. So if it says five feet, then you have to do five feet. If Cockmouth County varies their standard through a design exception or something like that. So we just requested that condition be modified. The next one has to do with some of the tree protection items. You know, a lot of these code or the recommended conditions actually are not necessarily based in the code. They're recommendations by staff to kind of tighten up some of the standards regarding tree, but they're not really based in the code per se. So there's things like the root protection zone, critical roots zone, recommending dead trees or snags be retained onsite, not allowing trees along the exterior property line to be counted. Things like that. And I'll go into a little bit more detail and the project arborist will highlight those as well. This condition number two also recommends that a path north of Maple Street be required, as Emily mentioned in her staff report. And because of some great issues, and we're probably proposing a wall on that north side of that road, feasibility of including that trail is very challenging. So we're requesting that that condition be modified as I've shown in red, kind of at the top of page two. The next one has to do with the spacing of driveways. Again, this is a, it's not a based in the code. It's kind of a thought that the staff had. And so that does create some challenges for the developer. And so what we've proposed is to share driveways fairly close together on the, so the adjoining properties would have a, not a shared driveway, but driveways kind of next to each other almost. And the purpose of that is to provide as much flexibility to develop the lots as well as to provide more on-street parking. So the 16 foot that's recommended here really isn't the parking space width. And so it would be kind of a dead zone or people would park in it illegally. So we're, we're requesting that that condition be removed. Next one has to do a lot of the code regarding the arborist materials. And again, the majority of these recommendations are not based in the code. And I did include the code at the bottom of page two, but the meat and potatoes of the tree code is at, on page three. So the main requirements are three trees per acre, greater than 11 inches and greater. Retained trees can be located anywhere on the site at the landowner's discretion. Doesn't say they have to be located along a property line in a tract. It can be located anywhere on the property and it's the landowner's discretion. Trees proposed retention should be healthy and likely to grow to maturity. And so that's what our project arborist has done in his review. And the last two of the trees, if possible, must be conifers. And the majority of our proposed retained trees are conifers. And trees within required setbacks, protect setbacks, like fish areas can be counted. And then in terms of tree protection, it just says basically that a protective barrier, no less than 10 feet from the tree shall be required. There's kind of the industry standard is one foot per inch of caliper. But this is what the city code says. I don't think we have a problem with the industry standard, but I just wanted to point out where there's conflicts between the standard and city code or with the recommendations. So the next condition. So basically I'll have the arborists kind of talking in more detail about the 13 trees along the north property line. And those are the kind of trees in question that potentially the root protection zone of those trees go over the property line. Some of those trees are, would be kind of in the backyard of already developed lots. So the chance of those being compromised is probably pretty slim. And so there's no reason that those shouldn't be counted. Again, it's at the owner's discretion where those trees, retention trees are located. Now, if those 13 trees can't be counted, then the number of trees, retained trees is problematic for developing the site. And the applicant may need to request a variance and plant additional trees. And really that is not a bad option if there, especially if there's tracks being identified. You know, those tracks could use more trees be planted. And now the trees are in the right place, rather than a, you know, a problematic tree in somebody's backyard that has those issues with it that, you know, staff is concerned about with the, the owner of that property maybe wanting to take the tree down or something like that. So that could be an option to grant a variance and request or require the applicant to plant some additional trees. The next one is on page four, and this is just some additional details as to, you know, defining what a revegetation plan is. And so I've written in there a recommended edit to the condition. So it says to vegetation plan to include grass seeding. It really doesn't, we're not really sure what a revegetation plan exactly entails. Number four there, again, there's really no basis in the code for the condition below. And so we're recommending the majority of that be stricken. And as I've kind of gone through with cross out and underline adding new language to help clarify that recommendation. That's the same with letter E. And letter H is regarding migratory bird act. This is one that is, you know, it's federal legislation that's been showing up in the staff report lately. And, you know, the applicant doesn't have a problem with this as long as he can work with the city in terms of the timing of when tree removal can occur. And so we're requesting that tree removal be allowed prior to the installation of erosion control. It's really not a grading function. It's more of just to remove the trees, get out of there, then put all of your tree protection fencing to save the retained trees and then put your erosion control and carry on. So it's just kind of a timing thing. And that, that was our request. The next one, number six there, I'll have this applicant's attorney talk about this one a little bit more. This is regarding the road grade and the conflict between city code, which allows local streets up to 15% grade and the fire code recommendation of a maximum of 10%. Next one on page six, and these are recommended conditions that would be required to final plat approval. So each of these groups of conditions, so there's, there is some redundancy in the conditions. That's kind of just inherent to how it works. The first ones are kind of things you need to do upfront. Next are things you need to do before you can do any erosion and grading. Next one is before you're issuing the construction permits. And the final one is things you need to do before the final plat approval. So this is again, the county standard that I talked about before. And so we'd like a little more flexibility to work with Cockmouth County. Uh, next one, number G there. This is the compacted gravel trail. We would like to ask that because of the reasons I mentioned, asset the trail to the north through lots 10 and 11 be removed. Number four there, this is installing fencing. You know, probably there's, this, you know, as I noted here, it's a little bit confusing as to what it is requesting and where the fences should be. So, and whether chain link is the best material or not. So we're just asking that it kind of a fencing plan be part of the construction plan to kind of sort out what the best location as these lots and tracks are configured and more known. So we know how that, the best way to include those fences. You know, the applicant would prefer not to have any fences. So that's, we can discuss that a little bit further detail. Next one, number six there is, this is just actually a suggestion. So the recommendation is that at the end of these dead end streets, vehicle non-access restriction be provided. And problem with that is that in the future, when that street's extended, that city or somebody will have to go through and do a replat to remove those V N A Rs. And I don't think anybody wants to do that. So better way to do this is you provide an access control strip as I identified in there. And the language in that access control strip would automatically go away. Control strip would go away when that road is extended. And I did look at the Marshall Ridge plat and that's how it was done in that plat. Again, the number 16 is fire apparatus. And I'll let the attorney talk about that a little bit more. The cash payment regarding these very turnarounds. Now, the applicant thinks these are a potential amenity for homeowners in, who are, have those on their property or next to their property. So we're requesting that they not be removed. And the easement language be such that if that road's extended, then that easement would automatically be relinquished as well, similar to the reserve strip language. So they would just remain and they would be kind of amenity for that little section of the neighborhood. You know, maybe the, the basketball hoop goes there or something like that. Now, this is after the fire department doesn't need them any longer. Uh, next one, letter E and that's 17. So in our request for a variance to the wall height, I inadvertently didn't include lot 26 in that wall. Emily showed on the sketch extends across lot 727 and onto lot 26. And so it really should have included lot 26. And then talking to the project engineer, he feels that a wall on the north side of that road, this is the wall to hold up the wall or the road, may be needed as well. And so we're requesting that that variance be granted to include lots 10, 11 and 26 in addition to lot 27. And since we don't know the exact height of that wall, particularly on the north side of the street, we're requesting that the variance not specify the maximum height of that wall. And so in that, in red below that, number 17, I've made a recommended change to that, to the variance language or the variance request. General conditions, how much time do I have?
Four minutes.
Okay. Right. I think I'll leave it at that.
That goes by fast.
After the presentation, I'll come up with questions. You guys might have to help answer some of those.
Peter Benos, I work with Tarrigan and Associates. I am the new project arborist. And I wrote the addendum for a tree plan that is clear with the previous one submitted in April.
Okay, can you, can you state your address for the record?
My address?
I, I already got it. And he's with Tarrigan, I got it.
So the addendum is 19 pages long and I'll try to summarize as best as again, within the two and a half minutes I've left. The biggest problem we, or question that came up was the retention of the trees on the north and east sides. And that they can't be adequately protected because of roots being on the neighbor properties. I think that's a, that should be reconsidered because we're dealing with the development side of the property. We're protecting the trees for the impacts of the construction. And the hypothetical event that one of the neighbors might do something to the tree should not be included in the development project itself. That's something that would be between the owners of the properties that debate that out if, if the tree were to die because of over pruning or root impacts from a project that they're doing on their side. Basically, they would have to hire an arborist to ensure that they're not damaging the project or the trees on that, on their project. That would be on our client side. I did define the root protection zone instead of CRZ or critical root zone as the ISA standards state that the critical root zone is like the, the. state that the critical root zone is like the soil around a tree where the minimum number of roots are considered critical due to stability of the health of the tree. There's not an actual standard measurement that is provided for that. And it's really based on the size specific needs for the trees. It could be five feet or 30 feet. They really don't know. So the acceptable standard is 12 feet per diameter inch of the tree for the root protection. And the tree protection plan that was provided prior in April adheres to that or prescribes that. So we're well outside the definitely rule from the city of Sandy.
I guess that would be, that would conclude our presentation. I don't know. How many time? Yeah, thank you. If you have any questions for me, I'd like to try to answer those.
We have a chance to do the reading.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, so now this is the time to go into public testimony. Guidelines for those of you who wish to speak. And try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thought. It is sufficient to say you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that is all you have to say. If you have documents, mats or letters that you wish to have been submitted by the planning commission, they are, they are, they must be formally placed into the record of the proceeding and you can do that either before or after you speak. You can email your materials to the city staff as well and they will be entered into the record. Testimony for the public hearing will be called into three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal and neutral testimony. For those of us joining in person, again, raise your hand at the appropriate time you would like to speak to be recognized and will come up to the podium, just state your name and your address. For those of you participating online, you can raise your hand and Kelly will acknowledge you. And for those of you on phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand and you will wait to be recognized. I will call on each person when it is their turn to speak. Each participant will receive three minutes to testify. Each person again, and then I said his name. So now I'm calling for any testimony in favor of the subdivision proposal.
I think, I think three of the people you have on there are actually part of the applicant team. So I think.
Yeah.
I believe. So you, I think you'll have two people on there that.
It could be. Yeah. Okay. Then I will ask for testimony against the subdivision proposal. Please come on up and let us know who you are.
Oh, my name is Michael Monica. My address is 19040 Southeast Hornstead Road, San Diego, Oregon. Short term resident moved here with my daughter and her family about a year ago. I do happen to work in Sandy. I absolutely love all the reasons why you all moved here. I mean, that's one of the reasons why I moved here. When I first came up here in 1993, this is one of the first places I drove through going up to Timberline. Snow stopping at calamity jeans. It was just absolutely beautiful. But unfortunately, I mean, looking at, you know, housing affordability of the median prices of homes. The impact that it's going to have on transportation coming down Bornstead. The outrageous speeds that people do on Bornstead. Just, I just, I can't support something like this. I was kind of maybe on the fence about it. You mentioned you took a drive, a drive up there. There's one speed limit sign up there that says 55 miles an hour. When it gets down to Cascadia Village, it drops down to 25. I just don't see that ever improving without improvement to that road and stopping people from going that fast. I have concerns about whether or not the local businesses, how they'll be affected by it, whether or not the people that are building the subdivision are a local business. I don't know enough about it. I guess I haven't done enough of my homework. Sorry for my brevity. Trying to just cut into all these things as much as I can, as little time as I have. I love Sandy Net. I love the restaurants. I am concerned about, you know, you guys all talked about trees and the impact. 700 trees lost and in the teens are going to be saved. To me, that just is it's ridiculous to me. I'm trying not to be negative. I understand that you need growth, but you talked about improving in infrastructure. Um, you know, I mean, you've got to take a risk if you don't have sidewalks for people to walk on and, you know, take their grandchildren for a walk, you know, and you don't have the schools that are going to be able to take the influx of a growing population, not only with this project, but on Jewelberry over Maple and Debarco, you know, the, the schools are already cramped packed. High school's absolutely beautiful. I have to say that I am an employee of the high school. So, I mean, I absolutely love that school. I mean, it's just when I walked in, the first time I walked in there, I was just blown away. But, you know, I mean, we want to be able to grow this community and make it the best place to raise our children or grandchildren for us to be able to again, walk down the street, not have to worry about crime, not have to worry about, you know, people speeding down the road, things like that. I mean, it's just all these different things that we have to take into consideration. And to me, I just have to disagree with it just because of those reasons. I absolutely love Sandy. I wouldn't want to have time. All right. Well, anyways, sorry. That's all I've got to say.
Okay.
Can you, can you spell your last name for me? I didn't catch that.
M O D I C A.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else present or online that would like to speak against the proposal?
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Are there anyone with neutral testimony, general comments neither against nor for the proposal?
My name's Kylie Monica hyphen O E O E Y. Same address. Do I need to repeat it?
No, I got it.
Um, pretty much what my dad said, but I also think it could be a potential good thing to grow. One thing I don't think he said, so I don't think I'm repeating the like affordable housing. The houses that were just still off to 11 a little ways away, you know, me and my husband drove through there because we were like, let's just go see. And they were all, you know, $500,000. That's not affordable. Especially with the economy right now. And I am, I know my dad said this, so I am kind of repeating, but just the speeding, you know, I trying to, if the sun's out, I'm trying to take my daughter. She's almost two months old on walks. There's the great park with the splash pad across the street. I can't safely cross the street, you know, I was trying just the other day and cars just speeding, speeding, speeding. It's just going to get worse. You know, I'm like, hello, people, I have a stroller. I'm not just like standing on the corner for fun. I'm trying to cross. I don't know, you know, if this happens, then something needs to be done. So people can cross the street. I don't know if that's, you know, I'm even thinking about, because we're right on that corner. We're that big yellow house. I'm like in Oregon city, they have buckets with flags. I'm like, should I go put flags and buckets so I can, you know, wave and safely cross the street? That's like one of my biggest concerns, just living on a busy street is you know, what if my daughter gets out in a few years? Is a car going to stop? Are they going to see her? We have dogs, other people, you know, across the street in the townhouses. There's many little kids. There's the daycare right there. At the beginning of Cascade Village and it just worries me every day. I hear kids scream just because they're outside playing, but every day I'm like, are they screaming because they're playing or are they, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. I hate talking in front of people. Or are they screaming because, you know, they just got hit by a car. It's like one of my biggest fears. I'm a medical worker, so you know, right now I'm home. So if anything happens, I would run out there and assist, but that's just one of my biggest fears is something happening, accidents happen. But I'm not completely against it and I'm not completely for it, but yeah, just one of my biggest concerns is how people fly down that road and don't stop for anyone. So I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Becky Haskin. I live at 39164 Amherst. I moved here three years ago from, not quite three years ago, from Southern California because it became so implosive, nothing but a concrete jungle, house upon house upon house. I went to, I turned into a new division over here today. And I thought I was in California. We're going to get these little enclaves of homes, which is very understandable and acceptable for growing the city. But how you do it is a big thing. Every day I sit on my deck and look out over April and I see those trees and would be absolutely abominable to take those trees out. What we did in California, I was on the board for 10 years of my condo. And what they had is between the houses up above and the condos below, there was a green belt. And in this green belt were trees. There was a water ditch, et cetera. And it worked really, really well. And these trees were very protected. And I see no reason that we can't do this to keep that tree line a long journey. Also, April at that point is so narrow. We have a daycare down there and just the duly trucks that park in front of the houses on either side. It's just so tight. I cannot imagine 300 and some cars going down there every single day. And the children play out there. And I think it's very hypocritical. Right outside here, we have the sign on the tree. This is protect the trees, take care of them. And what are we going to do? Take down 709 trees. As established, the community are not being considered, only being considered what's in the future. And these trees are such a huge part of Oregon and little by little, just like cancer is going away. And I certainly hope that you folks would really listen to the residents because it's just not this one. And the next group that is going to be built, the next group of houses goes right to the corner of my home. So now I have it on the side of my house. I have it in the back of my house. And there's no way that I would live in Sandy after that. It's not going to be any more beautiful trees. There's going to be so much traffic. It will never work.
Thank you. What was your last name?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testimony? Neutral?
So were you thinking about going into a recess now?
Yeah. So at this time, I'd like to take, and I'm actually, I'm looking through this material. I think I'd like to give our commissioners, do you think 15 minutes or 20 minutes? I guess I want to see what you guys think because this is a pretty big packet. I want to make sure that everybody has time to look through it to feel comfortable when we go into discussion.
Well, after hearing Tracy talk about it, I feel more.
Like you need more reading time.
Well, I felt like I needed a lot of reading time before. He went over a bunch of it. So I feel more adaptable. So it might take me less time. For me personally, I, I don't feel like I need 25 minutes.
Okay. Is 15 minutes going to be enough?
Commissioner Lee?
Commissioner Lee, are you there?
Can you get the timeout? When we started up, was it eight, 18?
Well, my, my watch, it's 15 minutes ago. It's my watch. Okay. Yeah, I just did the 15 minutes right there, so. So when I start again, I'll call the time again.
All right. Either way, you can, you can do that if you want. I just like to put it in there in case somebody's reading the minutes, so then it matters to big forms.
So it looks like all we're missing is our city attorney.
But I think we.
All right. Okay, I think we're ready to start again. Thank you. So we're gonna go on to a staff recap. Emily?
All right. So I'll try and go through the points that were brought up and um, also leave some time for Kelly to chime in on a couple things. Um, so the first, the first point was about the Bornsted Road right of way. So this section of Bornsted Road adjacent to the subject property is actually under Clackamas County jurisdiction. So they submitted comments and one of their comments was that um, the applicant shall dedicate five feet of right of way. That it's not a city requirement as long as um, we get the, you know, required six foot sidewalk, five foot planter, six inch curb in um, six foot bike lane, we're fine. So um, we're amenable to flexing the wording of that condition to allow more, more flexibility um, based on what Clackamas, the Clackamas County Transportation Department um, ultimately um, allows. So that's, that's fine. Let's see, the um, the path north of Maple Street that um, so that would be that continuation of the soft surface six inch, um, sorry, six foot wide gravel pathway um, aligning with the one to the south and then kind of um, going through the uh, the um, recommended tract between lots 10 and 11 and connecting up to the um, future cul-de-sac that's shown. That was a recommendation from our city engineer. Um, the plan submitted to him did not include a wall um, on that side of the road. Um, as the plan submitted to us also did not include that wall. Um, if it's not feasible, um, I don't think we're super tied to that as a requirement. Um, I think that would be fine. Let's see, next driveway spacing. So um, yeah, we recognize that the 16 feet is not long enough for a parallel parking. We, we said, we requested a minimum of 16 feet um, between driveways. Just to be a little more flexible, 22 feet would be ideal. That would provide the parking spot. The idea, so our code does wanna see a street tree every 30 feet. When you put a 24 foot wide driveway and then you have only one or two feet of non-driveway between it, there's certainly not sufficient room for a street tree. So you get the 24 foot driveway, the one or two feet of paving, you know, in between or grass or whatever. And then another 24 foot driveway that effectively creates um, a 50 foot driveway. Um, and then uh, when you add the fire turnarounds, it kind of exacerbates that situation even more. So our intent with that was to either have the driveways be truly shared driveways where it's one 24 foot curb cut and the two adjacent properties would share that. Um, that allows less um, conflict with pedestrians walking on the sidewalk and all of the, you know, people backing in and out of their driveways. I mean, also provides more space for street trees. Um, the idea being we would certainly like to see at least one street tree per lot. Um, so the, so the reasoning behind the 16 feet was not to imply that was necessarily a parking space, but just in some situations, it might not be feasible to do the 22 feet. So kind of looking at, you know, how could you get that a street tree between those two driveways and what would be an adequate amount of soil? Um, in all honesty, that's, none of it's an adequate amount of soil unless you use um, structural cells like silver cells or something like that. But that is getting a little bit closer to the intent of the code in terms of street trees and limiting the driveway widths. Um, let's see, the Arborist recommendations. Maybe I'll, I'll save that for a little bit later because that seems to be a big thing. Let's see. Um, the request to re-vegetate the area with grass seed, that, that's fine. Really, our code just doesn't wanna leave any bare patches of soil. So typically it would be um, like a, a grass seed of some sort. Let me just skip the trace stuff for a second and try and hit everything else first. Um, so the road grade, um, our code for a local street does allow up to a 15% grade. The fire code requirement is a 10% maximum as they um, stated. That's, I, I don't really wanna speak to this because it's a fire marshal requirement. I think that we rewarded it fairly flexibly. We didn't say that it shall be a 10% max. We said just work with the fire marshal um, on, you know, kind of an amenable solution. We could potentially make that condition a little more flexible, but that's really a fire marshal requirement and not something that um, I'd like to weigh in on too much. Let's see. Um, okay, the fencing, the idea behind the fencing to protect the tracks, so those recommended um, tree tracks. Um, the one on the north side of lot 27 and then the one between um, lot 10 and 11, that would be a joint wetland stream and tree protection tract. The idea is just to install fencing on the um, shared, the shared edge of the tract in the adjacent private property. And that's really just to um, make sure that it's known where that property line is. Because we have many instances of, of people getting confused over what's their property and what's not. And that's why it's just cleaner to put it in a tract. Um, whether that fencing is the black coated chain link or something nicer, something nicer would be awesome. Um, I think, you know, like the the typical, like, um, I think they call it a good neighbor cedar fence, that would be great. Or it could be something along the lines of what we're recommending for um, the houses along Bornsted, so that kind of black um, vertical slatted fence, so it's still see-through. Something like that would be fine. Um, certainly does not have to be chain link. The idea again is just to delineate, this is a tract meant to protect these trees and the stream and the wetland. And then this is your pri, you know, private property, this private lot. Uh, yeah, we thank the applicant for the VNAR um, switching that suggestion or, or that wording to the access uh, control strip. Um, we kind of just go with Clackamas County on this one. They seem to sometimes change their mind on how they want it worded, um, but that is totally fine to us. It accomplishes the same thing. Um, the idea that the fire turnaround certain amenity for the homeowner, um, and that they would prefer them not to be removed. Um, and then to just remove the easement, um, once they're no longer needed. Um, that may be the case for some people, certainly who want um, some more paved space. And. some more paved space and also potentially another, you know, driveway, an additional driveway with parking space. That would bring those lots out of conformity with our code, which again allows only a maximum twenty four foot driveway. So those lots where you have the twenty four foot driveway for the house and then you have you know, half of the fire turnaround that I believe is wider than twenty four feet would end up with much more than twenty four feet of driveways. So that would be a nonconforming use. Again, also for the street tree and pedestrian safety aspect, we would want that to revert back to a curb and a planter strip with street trees. And that would also, of course, create another parking space. And then for the paving on the property owner's portion of the house, the only issue with that would be with reverting it back to landscaping. Would, that's what we were recommending. If it were left as paving, we would not allow storm on a runoff to cross the sidewalk there. So I think that they would need to install a French drain or something of that sort. But other than that, I don't think there's really anything in our code that prevent it from staying paved. It would just, we would just want the sidewalk planter strip and curb to go in. Let's see, the wall height variance, so extending that from just lot twenty seven to lot twenty six and ten and eleven. That seems fine to us if it's needed to hold up the road and, you know, to protect some of the riparian area. That would work with our recommendation of turning the north part of lot twenty seven into a tract and turning the kind of joint property line and that area where the wetland and stream and trees are between lots ten and eleven into a tract. Then that actually that wall height goes away because that's no longer a front yard of a lot. So there wouldn't be a maximum wall height there. The little remaining wall on lots ten and eleven and then on lot twenty six. I think that would be fine to exceed the the four feet. I mean, keep in mind, this is the people's front yards and they would have their driveways presumably there. So I'm guessing that it wouldn't be that tall of a wall. Just because there would have, they would need, you know, to access their their house and their lot. But I'm not really an engineer, so I don't know, you know, how that would all kind of play out. I'm a little hesitant about allowing more than eight feet. But, you know, I, again, I kind of doubt it would be more than eight feet along those lots, just because they're sort of at the tail end of where the wall would be. But again, I don't, I don't really know about that. Let's see. And then, so there are some concerns about speeding on Bornstead and the transportation impact. So we do have a third party transportation engineer review this and their recommendations and conditions are incorporated into the recommended conditions list. That section of Bornstead Road is under county jurisdiction, as I mentioned. I don't actually know what it takes to go from, you know, to change the speed limit there. But if it goes from fifty five to twenty five, I think that that would potentially be a good idea. I don't know what it takes. Like I said, probably communication with Clackamas County. Let's see. Then there are a bunch of, let's see, some concerns about sidewalk connectivity and schools. We can't really discuss the school thing. The sidewalks, this, this proposal would actually add additional sidewalks that would help with the connectivity. And it would also add some crosswalk ramps to cross Bornstead, which, which would hopefully help as well with just with visibility of that crossing. Say, I can't really speak to affordability. They're not required to install affordable housing. And and then, let's see, I will kind of jump, I guess, into the tree stuff, which seems to be kind of a bulk of it. So we are not by any means trying to say not to save and preserve those trees along the north property line. We're just not sure that they could be, you know, that count as likely to grow to maturity just because so much of their critical root zone and in some cases even that minimum root protection zone of the half a foot per inch D B H is on the adjacent property. I have less concern about the ones that are adjacent to the already developed properties. If the trees are still standing now, then it's unlikely unless it's a new homeowner that moves in that they would just limit up all the way on their side of the property line. Or and or dig out significantly into the root zone of their backyard to dig like a garden bed or something like that. I would imagine that would have happened already, but a new owner could come in and could do that. And so essentially what we're, what we're really trying to do here is, as was stated, they they inventoried about seven hundred and fifty trees. The minimum retention standard is thirty eight. They are proposing that that minimum retention, that thirty eight tree minimum. And so we really would like to see if if we're going to go with the minimum retention here that these trees really are likely to grow to maturity and that they really are in a position that they're going to remain healthy and unimpacted negatively by either this development or a future development to the north or the east. So of those trees that are inventoried, there were, I think, three hundred and thirty three that met, that meet the retention requirement. So there are other trees that could be retained on the site. You know, almost three hundred other trees that could be retained on the site. We think it is probably possible, yes, the developer might lose a lot or two, but if you keep in mind House Bill two thousand and one, that's not so much of an issue anymore as like essentially these forty three lots could be eighty six. So if they were to lose a couple lots and maybe have forty lots, that's eighty dwelling units. That's quite, quite a lot. So I don't think it would be as big of an issue as it might have been previously. I would love to see the trees along the north and east property lines preserved. I think that that's probably something that the neighbors to the north and the east would like as well. And the new name, the new people moving into these homes would probably like it. We just would rather that the trees that are actually put into the tree covenant as protected trees be ones that are really, really likely to survive. So again, that's why we want a majority of them on the tracks not in people's backyards because we have just been seeing quite a bit of people wanting to take the trees down for whatever reason, once they move in. So that's kind of where that's getting at. I know there is some concern about our recommendation to leave snags. That's sort of rooted in that as well. So we are recommending these tree tracks. We're not saying to leave a two hundred foot tall snag, of course. That would not be a great option if the tree is in poor condition or dead or dying. But, you know, you can leave a six foot snag. I think the idea with a snag is really to cut that tree back to a size that is not a hazard. So if you have it on a tree, a tree tract separately, you have a dead tree, say, in the middle of that tract and you cut it down to fifteen feet. If it were to fall, it's not going to fall in house. It's going to fall within that tract and just provide habitat. And so that's the idea. It's not to really to have these, you know, dead trees in people's backyards. It's, it's really like to just think about habitat and then more of that function, like full functioning of these natural resource areas like the riparian wetland and stream areas and then where those trees are in the tracks and trying to have them be a little bit more like fully functional. And that's, that's where that's coming from. And again, it's not to leave dead trees in backyards. Let's see, I think we talked about the industry standard of the critical root zone, which is one foot per one inch D B H. Yes, that was, that was in the applicant's Arborists report. It was also the third party report and it's also the Pacific Northwest I S A International Society of Arboriculture standard. So that's where that's coming from. It is sort of the, I believe, the accepted tree protection area in the Pacific Northwest per that, per the I S A there and it's also what the project Arborist was recommending. And so that is what is in the code per that recommendation. A lot of the other recommendations are coming directly from that Arborist report as well. So, you know, we would like to keep them as they were recommended to be conditions of approval. Let's see. There's a crest, a request to allow the tree removal to occur prior to the erosion control installation. I'm going to let Kelly talk about that a little further. My thoughts on it is that's fine as long as the tree protection fencing is up. The erosion control fencing would go outside of the tree protection fencing anyway. The main intent is again that we want to really, you know, if we're retaining the bare minimum thirty eight trees, we really want those trees retained. Unfortunately, there's nothing in the code that can really you know, that we, where we can require more than the thirty eight, but we really can require those thirty eight to be you know, healthy and likely to live to maturity. And so we want that fencing up prior to any machinery really coming on the site. But it could, it could, the tree removal could occur after the tree fencing is up and prior to the erosion control fencing be installed as long as there's no grading occurring. But I'll let Kelly kind of speak to that if he has a different opinion because it's more of like a time timeline thing. Let's see. And then I think just the last thing is one of the members of the public brought up a green belt idea. I think that is a great idea. I think if you were to go with allowing some of those trees along the north property line that are adjacent to the already built subdivision to count as the retention trees, then it may make sense to put those in a tract as well. And that would sort of create a bit of a green belt between that area. That would be my recommendation if those trees are allowed to count as retention trees. But but ultimately, like I said, our recommendation really is to still, still, you know, retain those trees, but the actual ones that are put into the tree covenant would be located on a place in the property where they can be protected more wholly on the property alone and not subject to impacts from, you know, neighbors who want to limb them up or developers to the north or east that come in later and want to, you know, grade their sites close to these trees. So I think that covers what I wanted to say. And then I wanted to just turn it over to Kelly to see if he has anything to add.
Not a lot. I'm not, I'm not going to like go through any of the conditions or any of the changes that the applicants proposing. The one thing, the one thing I would like to just say and reiterate is that I think the density question mark is kind of a big unknown, right? So I was just pulling up on page twenty six of the staff report. The density per the zoning classification is between twenty eight units and fifty four. And the applicant is proposing right in the middle forty three. However, with the new house bill, as Emily brought up earlier, that's the potential of eighty six. I don't think there'll be eighty six units built. I'm not saying that at all. But I also don't think there'll be forty three units built. I think it's going to be somewhere in between there. And so I, I do think it's very important if we're thinking about livability and impacts to the surrounding neighborhood to think about what that kind of means and what that looks like. And, you know, the applicant in this case, Mr. Even, he's been great to work with. He came with a proposal that staff was not very excited about and it was not supported by the code without having connectivity and other items. And he went back to the drawing board and has come back with a much better proposal that we're recommending approval of tonight. This proposal, though, does have some variances, which most are not really other making like a road to the north. There's already a subdivision up there that's built out. However, I would say I think we're giving a lot of variances and a lot of code relief to this proposal. And as Emily said, I think, I think at the bare minimum, we owe it to kind of the neighborhood around that area and to the livability factor in Sandy to definitely meet our code for tree retention, creek preservation, wetland preservation. And with the new house bill in mind, it, it really isn't a forty three lot subdivision. I just, I want to be very clear about that, that we're looking at tonight. So I think it is very, I think the applicant brought up some really good points that we're willing to concede and we're, we're fine with. You know, with the grade of the road, I'm not that concerned about that. Five foot dedication on Bornstead, I'm not concerned about that. So there's a lot of things we're not really concerned about. But I, but I do think you need to take a strong look and really think about is tree preservation, wetland preservation, is that important? And if it is, then I think we need to put it, some of that in tracks. And I think we really need to stick to the code in that regard. And I mean, come on, it's seven hundred and fifty trees. It's thirty eight being preserved. It's, it's not a big ask. I'm sorry, it's not. So I'll leave it at that for now. If you have any more questions, we can deliberate and go into that more. But like I said, I think, I think the city and we have our council liaise on here. I think the city has given a lot on this one. I really do. I'm still hopeful that Planning Commission recommends approval and modifies some of the conditions. But I also don't want to give it away either. Like, I think we need to stick to some of our preservation requirements. And I think the applicant, you know, then the applicant can decide if they're fine with that proposal or if they want to appeal it to city council. So, thank you.
Right, it looks like it's time for an applicant has up to ten minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Chair McLean Wenzel. My name is Garrett Stevenson. I'm the applicant's attorney. My address is one, two, one, one, Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite nineteen hundred, Portland, Oregon nine, seven, two, oh, four. I don't have a whole lot to talk to you about tonight. I think that what this really is, is about trying to right size the conditions based on what staff wants to see. And I think that in no case have we taken the position that we don't want to accomplish the thrust of what the conditions require. What we were looking at, and this is, and our apologies, but we didn't only got the condition seven days prior to the hearing. It took us a while to actually go through each one and figure out how it may or may not affect actual development of the subdivision. And so what you have on offer is our take on what we think is a meets the intent of the condition that is being required, but also allows us to develop the project successfully and without too much undue hiccup. And a lot of it simply is in that wordsmithing. And I'm really happy to see that staff concurs with us on on quite a few of those. And I appreciate them looking at those so quickly. I, the only thing I wanted to talk about briefly is the fire code issue. I mean, this one is simple enough to me, but of course I'm a lawyer. And so we, we look at things in terms of of code and statutes, but I was asked to take a look at the city's requirement for and I think it's, and I, I apologize, I don't remember the exact wording of it in the conditions. But I think the thrust of it was that we would have to do sprinkling of certain homes because the the road grades that we were proposing are twelve percent and the typical fire fire code requirement is ten percent. Well, the city standard is fifteen percent. Luckily, we're not doing anything at fifteen percent. The most we've got is twelve. But I just wanted to clarify on behalf of my client that the city standard is the standard under Oregon law. And I don't see, assuming that that is correct, and I think it is, I don't see a basis for requiring sprinkling of those homes. But again, we're really close here. It's ten versus twelve percent. I just wanted to make that point. And the other thing I wanted to talk about before I sit down is tree retention along the outside of the property. I don't think having those in tracks is a big problem. I, I spoke with Kelly during our break and I spoke with my client. But I think if they, those trees are in tracks, we'd like to have the ability to count them towards our preservation requirement. And I spoke with Mac. He's got some things to say and he's actually got some ideas about how we can maybe even make the tree situation better even with saving those trees, but also perhaps planting some more. So I just wanted to tee that up. You know, we heard testimony from one individual who said, we really want to save those trees along the borders. Well, so do we, but we want credit for saving them. And there's nothing in the code that says you can't take credit for saving a significant treaty simply because it's got a root zone that spills on the next door property. But I assume that to the extent that we're fine with doing those in tracks, we would hope that we'd be able to count them. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and sit down and let Mac take it from here. Thank you.
How are you? Some of you guys know me. My name is Mac Even. I'm a, I'm a local builder and developer. I actually live in Gresham, but I grew up in Boring and I've done projects out here over the last few years and I grew up here. I'm, I'm working in the community that I grew up in and, you know, East, East Portland, Clackamas County out here. And I grew up in Boring and Damascus. And this is where I live and this is where my family is. And, and I, I enjoy everything about living out here as much as you do. And I also enjoy the fact that I can help build homes for the community that the people live in. With that, we've covered a lot of stuff here and there's a few things that I wanted to kind of go over. And then I, I don't, I'm I would actually kind of like to see if we could have a bit of a dialogue about the, the trees. Kind of a back and forth because we have some ideas. Kind of a back and forth because we have some ideas and things that might make the whole situation better. But it, some of the things that we talked about, like the 16 foot separation between driveways. You know, it, to me, because I'm also I'm also going to be building homes. So I developed the property and I'm going to build the houses and the end product. I'm not planning on selling any of these lots. I can't guarantee that depending on what the economy is doing, but that's my intention. And one of the challenges with the 16 feet between the driveways is we've got setbacks on the sides that are seven and a half feet. Okay. And so if you, if you take that 16 feet and you have a four foot, you know, throat to the driveway, and then it comes down in the lower section where you drive in, that's effectively 12 feet from each property line where the driveway can actually go in. If we could narrow that up a little bit and make it like, you know, 10 feet, 12 feet, then that way the throats would line up with the setbacks for the houses that were that we would probably, you know, end up proposing to build. So the flexibility in that, and, and I believe, you know, we have 109 street trees proposed. We should be able to keep that and probably exceed that if we can get a little bit of flexibility with the driveways. The fire marshal thing with the, and, and Garrett spoke to this a little bit in terms of the the 10% slope versus 12% slope. It's my understanding that city code kind of trumps the fire code. And actually, if you look at Clackamas County Fire Code, they do allow 12 feet, 12% grade on the streets. The, the only reason why I'm, I'm particularly concerned about that is one of the things that was brought up is affordable housing. And, you know, the the cost to add fire sprinklers to every one of these houses is going to raise the cost of minimum of 10,000 bucks. And that has to be passed on to the consumer. So we're trying to find a way to, to deliver the affordable housing that's community needs. The, the fences in the open public spaces. If we're going to create tree tracks, especially that are adjacent to roadways, I don't, I don't really want to fence them off. I mean, I kind of like the idea of like kids can go play in the trees and enjoy the nature that we're leaving and hopefully preserving in the, in the neighborhood. So that's my only thing with that. I'm a little confused on the idea of getting rid of the, the hammerheads and maybe Kelly can help me out with this, the, the fire turnarounds. Because I was envisioning that we'd have to pull out the asphalt, all that stuff, but it sounds like we could just take out the, the driveway drop and, and the throat to it and then plant a street tree there. If that's the case, then I, I can, I can accept that. I, what I, what I worry about is going onto somebody's private property in the future and say, hey, we're going to tear out this and they've got everything, their yard built around it and all that kind of stuff. And you're going to rip out their front yard. They're probably not going to like that too much. Plus, let's be real, these turn into basketball courts for the kids in the neighborhood. I mean, they just do. So trees. It was mentioned that there's, you know, 300 trees that can be retained. And the problem is, is there are not 300 trees that can be retained. We have to build roads. We have to build sidewalks. We have to build detention ponds, all these things. And there are trees in those areas. Big majority of the trees that we have to remove are in those areas. And we've, we've tried to work through this to, to preserve the trees that we felt were, had the best chance of survival and would be grouped together like what we've been told the city wants to see and, and put them in areas that are also, like you heard one of the neighbors saying it's a buffer to their neighborhood. They want to keep those trees. Well, now you're taking away 13 of those mature Douglas fir trees that we were thinking would help be the buffer and preserve those people's privacy and their livability in their homes. And some of the ideas that I was thinking about with this would be if we could request another variance. I know everybody loves these right now. And for those 13 trees that we are, if we can't count them, can we then in turn plant, I believe the code says if you don't have enough retention trees per acre, you can plant two additional trees to, to mitigate for that. I'd like to have the ability to do that. And I don't know if we can bring up the, the map of the subdivision. Because some of the, some of the
Emily might be able to.
Emily, can you bring that up?
C3.
C3?
C3.
Because I'd like to kind of point out what, what my ideas are. I know I only have a limited amount of time, but
The chair, the chair can provide more time if.
Yeah. Emily, can you hear us? Can, can you bring up the map?
It's going to take a while to open it, but yeah.
Well, I can talk about, I can, okay, great. Because there's, me and Ray were just back here talking, kind of brainstorming. We had another idea that staff hasn't even seen yet. And, you know, I kind of liked, if we can have a dialogue about the possibilities and figuring out what we think would be the best way to move forward on this thing. It, I think we can probably make this a win-win for everybody and probably even end up retaining more trees than what, what was, what we've proposed, but it would take a little bit of flexibility in terms of. So what we've got is the stand over there. So what, what I, what I'd like to propose is if we're going to lose the 13 trees and not be able to count them, which I would still like to be able to count them, but in the, in the tree tracks or what, what's being talked about as a tree tract, I believe on lot 27 in that area right there. And then also we're going to be building a pedestrian path that goes up along the, along right in there. And then we've got the other proposed tract down below on lots 10 and 11. If we could plant, you know, along that pedestrian path, we could plant trees every 15 feet or whatever is recommended by the arborists for spacing on Douglas fir trees and plant those along the trail and then plant some additional trees in those tracks to, to be able to plant the, you know, if we're losing 13, that'd be 26 additional trees planted. And then the other idea that Ray and I just kind of came up with, and this would entail me losing some lots. But if we could eliminate, honestly, if we could eliminate Street B, which is here. We can create a tree tract back here on these lots. And we could have lots that run here. So it'd be a longer run right through here. But we could put five lots across here, lose three lots and turn this into one big tree tract. And we could do some additional plantings in that area as well. Now, that doesn't meet the, the street spacing requirements, but if that's something we could do, then and get, get a little bit of relief on, we could create one heck of a tree tract back there.
Why can't we keep great tracks in there?
Well, the, the reason why it's difficult to create tracks there is because maintenance of them and everything. And then also the, these are going to be in people's backyards. And if you create a track out of these lots, we have minimum lot sizes that we have to meet. And those lots have to be 7,500 square feet minimum. If we put those trees in a tract in those backyards, then we'd lose that square footage on the lots. And we don't meet our density requirements. We don't meet our minimum lot sizes. So this would be a proposal that would allow us to, you know, kind of kind of a trade off. I mean, we, we'd get some relief in terms of, we wouldn't have to have the expense to build the, that additional road to the south. But we would, I would end up losing three lots, but we would have, we could put five across that frontage on Maple Street. And and then create the tree tract back there with a little bit of, you know, different configuration of the project, but that would require another variance in terms of the street spacing. So, um, I think that's all I have. Kind of feel like I went through that fast. So I don't know if you have any questions or.
I, I have a question if, if I can, because you mentioned taking out those three lots for Street B. Couldn't you accomplish the same task on lots three through nine and just remove three of those lots? And then that would make your lot size a lot bigger. And you could create a tract between the north.
This is one, two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah. If you remove three of those lots and combined them to make larger lot sizes, then take the track on the backside, you'd accomplish two things. You'd be able to save those trees. Be able to save the view that the citizens of the other are looking at. And you'd keep your limited lot size and you would keep Street B and then you wouldn't have to worry about space requirements.
So for the record, Ray Moore, All Kenny Surveyors and Planters, field box 955. Great Chris, excuse me, great question. The problem that you have, and I, and I analyze these trees, I spent more time on this development because of the trees, believe me. I came up with these color drawings and I did them for my use. It's like, what trees can I save? So I had to make them different colors. So if you really analyze this drawing and really zoom in and look at it, we have 700 and some trees and I could just choose from the golden ones. Because those are the ones the arborist said I could save. Then we have, we're constrained by the roads, right? And then if you draw the tree protection circles around all those golden trees that, that are this big, you know, these tree protection circles are huge. And we're, we're dealing with, you know, 50 foot radius circles. And if I had the time, I could draw all the circles for all those golden trees. What you'll see is that due to the roads with the sidewalks, the 8 foot P E and then the big tree protection circles that we can't encroach it in more than 25%. It takes out all of the preserved trees. So really, when I analyze this, the only trees I could save were on the perimeters. Because of the roads, not even the lots. So your suggestion there sounds great when you're just looking at the little circle or little tree symbol. But when you put those big circles in and overlay the road construction, we have a lot of topography out here. So it's not only the sidewalk and eight foot P E. We have grading that tapers out. So really, there's no saving it because of the roads. So that's why Mac and I are sitting back here. We're, we're Kelly, you know, we really want tree tracks. We understand the code doesn't require it. How can we give them a tree track? Well, how we can do that is to delete a road. That's the only way. And if we deleted that road, like Mac said, we would end up with a tree track back here with maybe 10 of the golden trees, but there's also 30 other trees in there that don't necessarily meet the tree retention requirement, but they're trees and they're alive and they could stay in this big tree trap. I know that's a last minute change really quick, thinking on the fly, but that's what we do. It's either that or you go with Mac's suggestion and keep the trees on the perimeter because that's what we can keep because of the road configuration and plant mitigate two trees per tree that we can't save, but we'll save them and plant the trees along the trail. More than likely, these trees are going to survive. I mean, they're great big fir trees. These lots are, were developed over 20 some years ago. They went in there before the tree code standard and disrupted the lot. Ignore the true protection, but somehow these trees have survived and they're, they're doing fine. So I really don't think that's going to change. These houses are developed. I don't think anybody, the lots are pretty small. They're smaller than 5,000 square feet. I think they're 40 something. So they're not going to go in there with an ADU or something under the new middle housing code because the lots are small. So I really don't think those trees are going to be damaged. I think that, that some of these arborists are being very conservative because we can't create an easement over those lots. Just because we can't create an easement, doesn't mean those neighbors are going to go in there and, and harm those trees. They have them for 20 some years. So with that said, I, I think you had a question earlier, which way to the houses.
Thank you, Ray.
On those corner lots, it confront whichever way the developer wants to build them at the time of home construction. Right now, sheet C7, I showed that the houses were going to face the street A. And the garages were going to come off of Street A. But I don't think there's a code that, that, that requires it to, to face Street A, but that's what we're proposing at this point.
Yeah, if my, just for, you know, knowledge, when I was asking that question, it's because of what the staff was recommending. We approve on the variance. I just wanted to see how the other houses would lay out. Yeah. Some of them are very obvious where they have to be. Those two corners, I was like, are they going towards Maple or going towards A? You're saying they're going towards A.
Yeah.
And that lines up with what staff was recommending the other side does. So it just makes sense. So.
Right. And, and the whole point of the, our first plan, we didn't cross the, the ravine because we couldn't get sanitary sewer and all of a sudden, last minute, we're able to bore between some houses and we can bring sanitary sewer into the site. So with that said, we were able to bring sewer in, but it would actually be out of the ground as it crossed the ravine. So that's why we're having to raise the road up and build retaining walls to hold the road. Primarily to get the sanitary sewer to cross to the other side. And that was a desire early on from the city. That's why they recommended, the first plan is that road didn't go through or wasn't sewer there. So I'd be happy to answer. Yeah. Any other questions?
I have one more.
Sure.
Lots 10 and 11. There was not a wall proposed.
Right.
But yet we're being told that to provide a pathway would be too expensive because of the grade change.
Right.
So I'm, I'm a little confused by that.
So yeah, and there's some, there's some discussion about that wet area, whether it's a wetland or whether it's not. We've submitted the Core DSL for concurrence that it's not a wetland. If it comes back and it is a wetland, we would need to put up a retaining wall. So my plans went under the assumption, not even the assumption, they, my plans were submitted based on our wetland consultant's report that said it wasn't a wetlands. And with that being said, we could just fill in there. Okay. And so I didn't put a wall in, and so now there's this discussion, well, what if it becomes a wetland? Well, then I would need a wall. We have to ask for a wall now because we can't ask for it later. It has to be a, a variance to the planning commission. If you have a wall in front of your lot. And again, it's a wall that the homeowners are going to see from the backside. The public on the street won't see it. There'll be handrails, guardrails at the top of the wall. So that's why I didn't show the wall.
I just really wanted that path. So.
Yeah. I, I really don't.
Because we don't know what that.
And I, and I don't think it's going to be feasible, even whether it's a wall or whether it's a two to one fill bank down in that ravine. I mean, it's, it, it just won't.
You got that long run, right? Between A and B.
Yeah.
Where I'm sorry, the, remember that bound downside road is that's.
Right, right.
I'm thinking more about the, what's to come behind it at the front section? How do, how do you get pedestrian traffic from one block to the other side without having to go 1,000 feet down one way to, to come back? How do they get through there? And all I saw was the cutaway for the wet drainage.
Yeah.
And I was hoping that you could put a pedestrian trail at least here, but.
Well, I mean, it, it would go nowhere at this point. It's undeveloped property. So the
That track, that's what it.
I mean, honestly, I don't know what you're developing here. It would make any sense to extend this road. Because you're going to run into all this stuff and this is just.
Don't see a lot of building going there.
Yeah. And I believe it's all private property. It's not a public track down there where that trail would, would dead end. And it wasn't even a planning code. The, the city engineer said, oh, that looked like a good idea. It wasn't a requirement from planning. They didn't, you know, wasn't their idea. So I really don't think. I mean, one, it's, it could be very difficult to build if we could do it. It'd probably be a set of stairs.
Yeah, I heard Emily say that they weren't tied to it. So I just, I wanted to get your opinion on it.
Yeah.
Other questions from, any of the other questions? I, I guess I'm hoping to hear a little bit staff's response to what Matt and Ray were just suggesting because I'm a really visual person. So talking about things that aren't, aren't printed for, that's hard. I appreciate you thinking on your feet. I just guess I'm
I mean, I, I think it's really hard to design a subdivision layout on the fly like that. So I don't, I don't know if it'd be better or worse. I, I think to me, the next steps would be to potentially close the hearing and then let the commission kind of talk about what they think of the big issues and then staff can elaborate on that. Alternatively, you could leave the hearing open if you have more questions of the applicant. So it's really up to you on how you want to do that.
Okay. So I know we've often done that in the past, like the hearing note, right?
Yeah. I mean, you can do it either way and you can always close it and then reopen it, but then it's just more procedure. So I, I would rather just leave it open. If you think you're going to have more questions of the applicant and, and the next.
So Chair McLean Wenzel, once again, Garrett Stevenson, I just conferred with the applicant and it is what, what time is it? It's almost 9:30 and I really appreciate you guys sticking with us on this. And I think that, you know, this is going to be a good project and we're only making it better by taking the time to go through. And I think that, you know, this is going to be a good project and we're only making it better by taking the time to go through these, these steps. I think what I would like though, because of, um. You know, you have the additional tract ideas that we've heard for the first time from staff today. And in response to that, we're, um, proposing some alternatives that the plan. And I think maybe the right call here is to continue the hearing. So that we have the ability to put some pretty pictures together for you to see. And hopefully we can speak with Kelly and Emily about what they would like to see. And then, um, reconvene once you've had a chance to digest all of that. And that would also give you the opportunity to continue to ask us questions.
It, yeah, we can ask Chris, but if they're, if they're request, if they're requesting the continuance, then automatically the clock is continued. That's my understanding unless Garrett or Chris.
It, it doesn't matter because we're proposing it and we obviously would not, uh, we would not say no to that, so.
Chris, do you want to elaborate on that, please?
Actually says ask being writing, so I would expect an email to, but absolutely. I'd take Garrett and the whole team at their word. If they, if they want to continue it, we'll continue it.
Yeah, that, I, I appreciate that and I think it will be really helpful. Yeah.
I think before we go to that, and I don't want to speak over you, but I think it would be really nice to hear kind of the commission have a discussion.
Okay.
Because I think so far what you've mainly heard is the applicant and staff. And I think the downside of not kind of having some deliberation with the commission. Is there might be other things that neither one of us brought up that you guys are thinking? That you would like to see addressed or maybe additional details before we meet again.
Yeah.
So I'd hate to miss that opportunity by kind of including the meeting too soon.
Okay.
Not that I don't want to go home, but like, I think it would be better to like hear from you guys and do a round.
Um, so Chair, one of the things I would offer on that point, because I agree with Kelly, is one of the things I've done before is a straw poll. Um, with planning commissions where we say, hey, which idea did you like the best, which didn't you like? Um, so, um, if, if the chair is amenable, we could do something like that. Uh, otherwise we can, if you guys have observations you'd like to give us, we'd be happy to listen as well.
So, uh, procedurally.
I would, I would ask her attorney.
Okay, so Chris, can we, what would I need to do to allow each commissioner to kind of just voice? What their concerns are and thoughts?
So, I, I mean, the, um, we've been through the script and, uh, um, all of the public testimony. So, um, the council can, um. Just close the testimony for tonight, deliberate among yourselves or everybody, you can just go around the dais and, and everybody can give their thoughts. And then continue the hearing to the next available date. Um, that would allow everybody the benefit of your thoughts. Um, but provide some structure for the hearing and allow it to be continued for further deliberation.
That sounds good. Okay, so then I'll go ahead and close the, the hearing.
The testimony, just close the, the testimony for tonight.
Tonight, yes.
When, when would the next available date? Do we know? We already have a meet, a July meeting with an appeal and another large land use application. I would, I would. I'd be hesitant to put it on that meeting. I think, I think we're going to like midnight or one in the morning if we do that potentially. And I, I don't think that's a good way to do business personally. I know they, commission meetings used to go that late, but I think that's a terrible idea. I think bad decision or just poor decisions are made. Um, so I think we could go on that meeting if we think it's going to be quick, but I don't think it's going to be. Um, so alternatively, August twenty ninth. I mean, we have a lot, we have a lot of vacations planned. Um, I don't even think Emily's here in August.
Yeah.
I'm not here for half of July. So, I, you know, I like the idea of continuance, but it's just, it is going to be tough to plan a meeting. Be honest.
Well, it's practical, you leave the record open, they have to, you have to deliberate, make a decision anyway, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
So two and a half months?
Well, no, July twenty.
July twenty.
So July twenty, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm getting my dates on myself. July twenty fifth is the next date, but I already have. Two items on there.
Yeah.
And then August twenty ninth will be the next one after that. With nothing on it right now, but. Or we can proceed with the decision tonight, so. So either way, I, I would still think it's a good idea to go around and care what the commission is thinking. If there's anything that we didn't touch upon, um. And should just kind of get some ideas so that either you make a decision tonight or you continue it as. Has been requested, I guess it could be lifted. That'd be my suggestion, at least.
Okay, so, um. We're going to close testimony, um. Let's have a conversation. So, Chris, I'm, I'm interested in what thoughts, concerns, ideas? What are the things that you've heard or didn't hear that you're thinking about?
We just went around briefly.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I can start. The three initial things come to mind, uh, for me, I'm intrigued by this new track, tree track idea. Uh, I think it's worth maybe fleshing out a little bit more. I do have maybe this ties into the second concern a little bit. I'd like to see a little bit of what that does with the driveway spacing and street trees and how that affects that. Um, and if it maybe helps or hurts or where that ends up there, uh, because that's the second consideration. The third for me is I don't have an opinion on the matter yet. I'd like more discussion amongst us around those, uh, fire turnarounds. Yeah, uh, I don't have an opinion yet on that, but I would be very curious to hear more discussion.
I would support all of the recommendations that Emily agreed with. That they suggested that she said she was okay with. Um, I had three other things that I was uncertain about. One was the path on the north side. Um, I'm now, um, after hearing Ray talk, I'm, I'm, and I heard Emily say she wasn't, um. Sold to it, so I'm, I can, I'm, I can let that go. Uh, on the trees, um, I just think about the code myself. I think we should count the trees along the north side border. And that they're going to build, uh, put in more trees along the trail, that, that would be more trees than enough. That's just my personal opinion. Um, I, I don't think we should hold it against them that the, that the root zone falls on the other side and just by opinion. And then the road grade, the fire marshal road grade, the fifteen, ten. I looked to staff to give me a recommendation there because I hear they're, they're saying twelve versus ten. I'm, the twelve is within the fifteen that the city says, but the fire marshal's saying ten. I would hate to impose sprinklers for a two percent grade difference. I would need to know the, maybe Chris can help. Who's, who's, who rules Trump, who's?
And even beyond the, the who's rules Trump, it's really seems like a decision the fire marshal should be making. I mean, we want the fire trucks to be able to get where they can go.
That, that, then why would our, why would our code be different than that?
Yeah.
Um, that, that's, so that's, Chris, maybe you could help me answer that question. You're muted. Fortunately or otherwise, I suppose, um, the planning statutes, planning laws say that. It's the fixed goalpost rule. You can only apply the criteria that are in your development code. To your decision on the application. And the development code says fifteen percent, the fire code says ten, there is a disconnect. And I suppose we need to look at that in the next round of, of amendments to the development code. But legally, uh, you can only apply the criteria that are in the development code. Thank you, sir. So, so with that, I'm, as I said, I'm, I'm pro tree for them to count the north side borders. Um, I'm now pro road grade as well, um, because I don't think that the, I think our code says it all. That's all I can go by is what our regulation says, so that's on, I'll support that.
I, um, I, I guess the, the two piece, I, I agree with Ray's piece and I do want to hear, um. More information about the turnaround, how that's going to affect this trees, the. Street trees and driveway spacing. I thought when I heard and I caught Matt commented on it, that Emily had said something about. We don't necessarily have to take out the big concrete. What we do is, is we need to put the sidewalks and the.
Put the curb in the planer, right?
I heard that that was up at the property owner's discretion now. Like if they wanted to leave the pavement, they could, but they maybe needed the option to change it to landscaping. Because if they didn't want it, you know, that temporary turnaround, did they have the option that they could?
So, so the concern for me there is that, um. The code wants street trees every thirty feet or whatever. And, and they want to break up those driveways so that pedestrians and bicyclists have places to wait when cars are coming and going. I mean, it's not as safe for them. We have these big swaths of concrete. So I, I just, that was what occurred to me was I think it is important that. The driveway spacing is important and somebody had suggested, um. Maybe a shared driveway that goes like that, so you still have more room for street trees and, and locks. The other thing I wanted to, I, it, it's important, I think, is the trees. And I appreciate, uh, Ray and Matt, you know, trying to work with us on this. As, as somebody in the public, you know, if I see seven hundred and fifty trees or seven hundred, you know. And then we're only requiring thirty eight of those trees to be, uh. Cast. And Emily had said this, it's really important that those trees survive. And, and that is, and I, I think that's incumbent on us in the planning commission. We make sure that if we're only requiring thirty eight trees out of well over seven hundred trees. We want to make sure that they, um, survive. So I'd like the idea of, uh, of the tree tracks, you know, because they're most likely to survive that. So, but I'm concerned, so. I'm also concerned about counting those trees up along the, the, the border. What, I mean, those thirteen trees, maybe they're unlikely to come down because of being pruned, but. So anyway, I, I guess it just as part of the discussion, I like the tree track a lot. Because I think that that's where we're going to have the most, um. Success at retaining trees and it always makes me nervous to have, um. New trees planted instead of keeping these big old growth ones. We, we've seen how much more benefit the older trees have, right? They withhold, they hold a lot more water and carbon and all the things that we've been learning about. So taking down a great big tree and planting some vegetation trees, they're, they're not apples to apples.
Isn't the argument for those thirteen trees though, really, that the root zone falls on the other side of the property line? And we don't know if it's going to be, I think Emily, you said it, we don't know if they'll live to maturity. I mean, that's the real question. And I guess that question is for us to decide. Is, is that tree got a potential to live to maturity? And I think at a reasonable expectation, you have to say yes. It's already been there, there's already houses there. It's most likely going to live to maturity. Can you guarantee it? Absolutely not. Um, the trees up on the west side of the border, there's no homes over there. Anything could happen to those, um, in the future. I don't, I mean, we don't know, but I, where I was thinking about changing the, the three, when I heard him say that they were. Would take three lots away. I was trying to make the lots bigger, but I understand the, the, the tract and access to it. And you still don't save those trees in a sense, um, or I don't say saves the wrong word. You still don't mitigate the risk of those trees coming down at a future date from a, a landowner. So I don't know what, what that will do and I guess I'm just talking out loud now. It's, uh, to me, it seems like the regular, the, the code says. You know, and I, I, I hear you totally when you think about the, through the public lens, seven hundred trees down to thirty eight, but that's the code.
We also have, we have that house built two oh one and the Senate built four fifty eight. And, you know, that's trying to allow developers and well, to make affordable housing, to allow more density in order to have affordable housing. And that's also going to, as Emily mentioned, and I think, um, I did too. We're not talking about forty three, we're talking about the potential for eighty six or eighty, right? So.
And they're offering to plant, and this is, this was right, this was just tonight, right? They say, hey, we'll plant some more. I mean, that ties into it, at least in my mind. If you, if you are going to plant more and you, and we count those, you'll, you're still going to have more than thirty eight. Anyway, just, I'm not trying to sway you, I'm just trying to talk out loud. Because I'm a tree guy too.
I know, I just, yeah. Yeah, okay, um, let me get breezy and Commissioner Pullman. Yes. Bishop Pullman.
Okay, um, for me, I, the fire turnarounds are, I don't like going into something. And having a setup that is going to mess with people's property in the future. I, I heard somebody say, you know, turning, coming in later and changing that. Um, saying, okay, we're going to take away your basketball platform. That's very confusing for new homeowners and especially five years down the road. Um, I don't know how I feel about the idea of that just happening. And I, I understand the need for the fire turnaround. I just think I need to understand the fire turnaround process more and, um, what our options around that really are. Because that, and this doesn't sound like a. Doesn't sound like a good homeowner plan, um, and property plan for the homeowner, for the person buying it. And I, I heard too, I don't, if I'm going to develop later, according to what we have going on now, if I'm going to be that next developer. Um, I don't want to split the cost, that's a new thing for me from the old situation. So cleaning that up, I think would be, um, pretty important to me. And I also, the tree, I like the tree tract, but I can absolutely see the value in. We do know that the trees along the one side are relatively stable. Um, and I can see counting some of those. I, I'm curious, and this is my lack of experience. I'm curious what determines how much of that tree is on which side of the fence line that makes it countable or not countable? And maybe I'm thinking too hard, but, um, I'd like to, I want to look more into that.
Emily, do you want to explain that about the, about the critical roots zone again? Would that be helpful?
Sure, um, so there's really two things that we would typically look at for the tree protection areas. So the critical root zone is one foot per one inch diameter or breast height. So you measure how wide the tree is, what the diameter is at about four and a half feet above grade. And so if it's say, you know, a fifteen inch diameter tree there. And then the critical root zone is fifteen feet out from the trunk. And that's sort of where a majority, you know, the roots extend far beyond that. They might extend, you know, in, in a lot of situations, three times that amount. Um, forty five feet, I would say on that fifteen inch D B H tree. But the roots that are really important to the stability of the tree and the health and all of that are typically within that, um, first fifteen feet. And that's typically, and again, these are just like, you know, as there are, as pointed out, kind of typical standards. There's no one size fits all, but this is sort of the accepted Pacific Northwest I S A standard. Um, and that typically that critical root zone also lines up with the drip line of the tree. And not in all cases and conifers are different than dissuition and all of that, but. Um, that is sort of like the accepted standard to look at that critical root zone. Now, there's also something called the minimum root protection zone and that's at half a foot per inch D B H. So for that fifteen foot tree, the roots within seven and a half feet out from it are absolutely critical. You cannot like impact them at all. You don't want to dig around them, you don't want to grade around them, you don't want to, you know, certainly not develop around them or do anything. Um, and then it kind of to allow flexibility, it's, it's sort of accepted that within that minimum protection zone, you know, of the half foot per inch D B H. And then that, the circle, you know, circular ring between that and the one foot per one inch D B H. You can impact up to twenty five percent of that typically, um, and not really injure the tree. So the ones where. And not really injure the tree. So the ones we're the most concerned with on those property lines are the ones that are really just a foot or two away from the property line. Bigger trees and they have their minimum root protection zone on the adjacent property. Again, you know, I've certainly heard what everybody's been saying, and I would agree that it's, it's somewhat unlikely. For the properties adjacent to Cascadia Village that's already been built out. If those homeowners haven't limbed those trees up or disturbed the roots at this point, you know, it's, we're probably okay. But, you know, again, we're looking at the minimum retention. There's nothing saying they can't retain more trees than the minimum. There's nothing really saying they have to, but similar to density, you know, they have to meet the minimum density. They can't go over the maximum, but they don't, you know, they can go above the minimum, right? So you could go above the minimum tree retention. And so what we're trying to say is not, don't save those trees along the property line. They're there. We think they are amenities, you know. Think the people to the north would appreciate having them. But just because it is the minimum, rather than just stick to the minimum. Save those trees, but actually in the tree covenants have, you know, thirty eight trees that are really more protected just on the subject property. Through the use of tree tracks where there's not that conflict between the root zone extending onto private property, whether it's. A new lot in the subdivision or an existing lot, north of the subdivision or east. So that's really kind of what we wanted to see was thirty eight trees that like. This developer right now with this project could say, we are really focusing on protecting these thirty eight trees. You know, we're setting them aside. We're also going to protect these additional thirteen that could potentially be impacted in the future. Or, you know, again, we do have a lot of homeowners who move into these new subdivisions and they want the tree down the second a branch breaks. It happens quite a lot. I think we've processed at least two different. Tree, multiple trees on two different lots in Marshall Ridge already that just was just completed. You know, within the past year, those houses were just finished being built. It's happened up in Sandy Woods on a few lots already as well. It, it just happens quite frequently. So that's, we're just trying to kind of avoid that. We're not saying we don't want those trees saved. We, we would like to see those trees saved. And to create that buffer, we just would like to, you know, kind of have. Thirty eight trees that like are really, really saved just on this property and then those would be additional. So that's kind of where we're coming from.
Just a follow up question. I've got to re clarify myself with the, with the policy. If they, if they do not save twenty or thirty eight trees, let's say they only save twenty five. The thirteen, they have the option of planting two for every one. So if they kept twenty five and planted twenty six. Able to thirty eight, is that, is that?
Yeah, so, um, so they, there is a tree variance process. They would have to apply for a type three tree variance. And that does allow the planning commission to make a decision to allow mitigation trees. And it's at least a two to one ratio to count for. Retention trees. In this case, you know, I can't speak for Kelly. I, I don't think though that I, I can speak for myself. I would not be supportive, just again, based on the number of trees on the property and, you know, where there's. Over seven, there's really over seven hundred and fifty because it's only six inch and greater trees that we inventoried in. That was two years ago. So some of them. Have likely grown since then. There's probably some new ones that are now six inches that weren't counted. Some have likely died since then because we had those storms and, you know, heat waves and all sorts of things. Ice storms, windstorms, snowstorms. So we don't know exactly what's out there now. Yeah, as Ray pointed out, quite a number of them are in fact in the roadways or near them. They're also, also are quite a number that are just in the middle of lots. You know, but haven't looked at it too closely. I think probably some of those lots, and like they're saying that, you know, an additional tree tract. Could work and then those trees could be more, you know, more definitively, more likely to survive basically.
Okay, Commissioner Lee, you have, you want to add to the discussion?
Kind of last but least, I really like almost all of the applicants' ideas that were featured in the revisions. I like the idea of new trees, two for one, going along where that pathway was going to be. Because I'm not sure that DSL is not going to declare that a wetlands area. And having some trees along there might be somewhat protective. I also really like their ideas about the turnarounds and how that would affect future landowners. Let's see what else. Basically, everybody else has already said something that falls in the same area that I was thinking, so. I could go forward with this with knowing that the applicant in the city would work together on managing the tree plan.
So.
And I'm very sorry to interrupt, Commissioner Winslow. I realize that the record is closed, or at least the oral testimony is closed. I would respectfully request that you reopen it because I think that. Well, I think that there might be an easier way to handle this. I, I know we've hit you with a lot of information, but I've tried to synthesize everything I've been listening to tonight.
We, I didn't close it, did I?
I think, I think you did just say like the discussion was going to be limited to planning commissioner or something like that.
Okay, so.
I don't, you guys. Chris would be the better.
The, the chair declared that, that testimony was closed for the night, but you can reopen that if you wish. That's within the purview of the chair.
Okay, um, so, you know, we want to be respectful of this planning commission's time. And I think that what we heard the planning commission go through was very, very helpful to us. And so I'm going to make a proposal here based on what we, this planning commission, also what we heard from staff. And I'm going to start with the trees because I know that's the hot button issue. And I think instead of coming back to you at some undetermined date with a new plan. This plan that you have in front of you, it's been fully vetted by staff. We all know it. We understand how the streets work and stuff. And so I think that there might be an advantage to sticking within kind of the general confines of what you have in front of you. And with that in mind. I think what we could do is we, we're fine at this point, based on what we're, we've heard with preserving. The trees in the tracks that staff has proposed, and Kelly went over those with me. And we could agree to not count those trees along the boundary of the property. As retention trees, we would still commit to preserving them. And we would plant two trees for each one that we couldn't count, which I think comes up to twenty six, right, along the pathway. Yeah, the thirteen we couldn't count. So at least twenty six trees along the pathway through the tract that. That Mac was talking about. The fire turnarounds, I think, you know, I think we would rather leave those in there just because we don't want to come back after somebody's living there and tear them out. The road grade, I think your city attorney answered that question. We would really like to keep our driveway spacing as proposed because we think that's going to be best for people. First of all, the people living in those homes, people using the sidewalk, and also future street parking. We, I talked with Ray and we, we definitely think we can get enough street trees in there. We may have some areas where I guess we're not quite hitting the spacing quite right, but we think that we can, we can do that. And frankly, I think it's going to look great. And we're definitely going to get the minimum number in there. And then. Let's see here, uh, what else? I just don't want to miss anything. And then what we could do, assuming that the. Planning commission was amenable to those changes, we could come back with a revised set of conditions consistent with what. City staff has said that they're okay with, as well as the changes I've just mentioned. And we could present those to you as findings instead of continuing the hearings that you could then adopt the decision if you're comfortable with going that route. So I wanted to throw that out there in the best effort to synthesize everything we've heard tonight. And also not have to come back to you with a, a whole new plan and a totally different tree tract. Because maybe there's an advantage to keeping that street, maybe there's not, but it's a lot of work to, to redo the subdivision. So. I just wanted to, we offer that to the planning commission for its consideration.
I, I, I've actually never been involved in a process as Garrett just laid out. So I don't even know how that would work. I didn't talk to her city attorney about that, but I, I've never been in a process with. Final list of conditions for the planning commission to basically rubber stamp. Is that what you were suggesting?
No, Kelly, what I was suggesting is that with those proposed changes to the conditions, plus. We would go back to the, to this meeting and figure out what you and Emily were comfortable with, based on our changes, we would come back. And we would go back through the meeting to make sure that we're all the right. But we weren't suggesting that we draft the new conditions from cloth. What I wanted to do is have a new set of revised conditions that were updated to reflect. The changes I just went through with you guys, primarily street grade, fire turnarounds, sidewalks. And our tree proposal. And then the changes that I, I think Emily was okay with. Staff would have the last word, obviously, on presenting those to the planning commission. But if that's a direction, because I'm trying to keep these things in, in manageable buckets. But if that's the direction the planning commission wants to go, I think we could do that. And it might simplify having to come back again and have, having similar discussions. As far as the straw poll, you could do that as part of your discussion deliberation.
Okay, Chris. What, can, can you give me any advice as to where I can go with this?
I'm, I'm, actually, my, my greatest concern is. That the staff will not be able to craft conditions that. I mean, staff, you could direct staff to write up in a decision like Mr. Stevenson just described. And go ahead and approve it, but you'll have to just assume that staff captured all that and got it correct. And that the final decision reflects the desire of the planning commission. I understand the calendar's challenging, but it would be preferable if staff could. If, for example, if the planning commission is okay with what Mr. Stevenson's just described, direct staff to write that up in a final decision. Come back and review it and make sure it is what you thought, what you were expecting, and then go ahead and approve it then. Ideally, but I understand this, the schedule is challenging. So I, I would ask Emily and Kelly, is what was just described something that can be. Put down on paper? And I heard Kelly reasonably describe some concern about trying to draft conditions of approval on the fly.
Well, I'm always open to trying something new, but. It, it does present some issues and the issues are that we, presuming that. We know exactly what the planning commission wants to change the conditions to. And the findings. So I, I heard, so I, I wrote a pretty lengthy recap here and I. I heard mixed opinions, but I heard that some commissioners were open to looking at other ideas. So I guess I don't have a good sense of a consensus from the commission on what they want to see. That's my.
I, I heard Emily recap, when she did, she went through her recap of the condition, it's not the variances, but the condition list. And she was going through giving. Clear answers about what was it, you know, meaning, what she's a meaningful, she wasn't. And I, those things that weren't a meaningful were the tree tracks, it was the, the turnarounds. The road grade. Those are the big three things that we've talked about. I heard them offer suggestions and of course, Chris mentioned the, the road grade. So I, I mean. I guess I'm thinking it's too, too difficult to, to look at that condition. They proposed versus what formerly we kept, she approved on, but then write that up in a way that when we read it. We can, we can have it in black and white in front of us as to what was said. I, I just don't know if you have the resources or capacity to do that by. July or August week.
I didn't see where we had much dissension among us and what the applicant just suggested in some of the changes. And what Emily has described, I think we're pretty clear on where we want to go and pretty close.
Yeah, I thought so too. And with the discussion about keeping those, the trees on the, on the boundary, but not. Not counting those, that was a big shift for me.
So Chris, from a, if I can ask this, so from a. Process. Perspective, sorry, it's just getting late. From a, a process perspective. They would be giving us revisions and we would just be bringing them back to the commission. We wouldn't be continuing the hearing.
Would we? That's correct. Well, because you haven't reached a final decision, technically you are continuing the hearing, but like we would close the record. Staff would write up what we think we've heard tonight, what we believe the council, the, the commission supports. And bring it back and present it at the next opportunity for the commission's final review and approval.
Okay, I get it. I think.
So close the record, give us a chance to go away and write this up and we'll bring it back to you and you can tell us if we captured what you, what's your directions.
But the, the only, we're talking about here is we're having the commission approve the final order, whereas usually it's just the. Chair comes and signs the order at our office. That's really the only.
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the council, the commission will approve the final decision. The chair will sign the order.
No, right, no, I get that. So some cities have the final order re-reviewed by the planning commission before, basically it's a decision. We've never done that here, at least in my tenure. And so.
Well, I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not hearing a, a coherent decision here. Unless, I mean, we have, I think, agreement on the fire turnarounds and. Slope if the road issue and maybe the trees, is that all there is?
I, if I'm the one writing this up, I don't feel like I could, I'm certain. I understand the decision, because what the applicant just basically proposed was a tree variance. And that was definitely not something that staff recommended and I didn't really hear that from the commission. So I'm confused on that. The fire turnarounds, I thought what I was hearing was that people were on board with putting the curbs in the street trees. And planter strips back in, including the applicant. So I just want to verify that and see if. We would then just put in a drain of some sort so that in the future, if it was paved on the private property. It wouldn't sheet flow across the sidewalk because that would be against our code. And then for the driveways, I actually don't know what the consensus was on whether we could, you know, either just do shared driveways. Or, you know, of course, the other thing is they don't have to be twenty four feet. They could be ten feet wide and that would free up a ton of room for both parking and for. Aligning with the setbacks, the side setbacks. So I don't have clarity on a lot of things based on this discussion. I also won't be here all of August, so I might not be the one working on it.
Thanks, Emily.
No problem. Have fun.
I thought he came back up and said, on the trees, they were going to save thirty eight. And plus the thirteen.
It'd be preserving thirty eight and then providing twenty six mitigation or twenty six planted trees.
Above and beyond. At least the treatment, that's, I didn't think that was. We don't have a plan for it. That's the idea.
And so would those be in a tract then with tract ten and eleven extend east to include the ones along the north property line?
Yeah, that's, yeah. They did say that.
And we didn't talk about driving.
Yeah, in the. I, I think what we could do, this is what I would propose, is go forward with what Garrett laid out. I, we, we definitely will not have an opportunity to get this all done by the July twenty fifth meeting. It's just impossible with my vacation. It's just impossible. So it had to be the August twenty ninth meeting. So it had to be the August 29th meeting, or you could reconvene at an alternative date if you chose to do so. But it sounded like August 27th, 9th worked for everybody, so.
Yeah, I thought August 29th, what's it, 29th?
Yeah, July, meaning that just, just does not work. It just doesn't work.
Where does that put us on the driveways?
Yeah.
Follow the code.
So at this point, what, if I could recommend something to the planning commission, you've heard, you've heard from all of us, I think now would be a good time. You know, if the driveway are a sticking point, and you guys need to discuss that, now would be a good time to discuss that and close the record and deliberate. And if this is a decision that you guys feel comfortable in making, you know, despite my sort of club-footed attempts to make it as simple as I could, I'm happy to put together the first draft of the findings so that we're taking that effort off of Kelly and Emily. Submit it to them, they'll decide, obviously, whether or not they agree with my proposal. But I just want to make sure that, you know, and it's fine to bring those forward on August 29th for us. I'm concerned, though, that if we had totally new proposals and a new set of conditions on August 29th, we wouldn't be adopting findings until later. So this is just a humble effort on my part to see if we can get a decision that we can then move forward on tonight. So that would be.
Yeah. Madam Chair, my suggestion is, I think Emily has a good list of the things that are still unresolved. It's not a long list, maybe we can go through it quickly and get direction from the commission on each of those. And if so, and we can resolve each of those issues, then the commission could conceivably vote to approve or deny it tonight.
So Madam Chair, I'm having to leave for the airport at 10:15, but I'll stay as long as I can.
All right, so. It seems to me that what, the only thing that we really haven't come to, I mean, my, something is the driveways. Emily, do you have that list of what we still need to?
It was the driveways, the fire turnaround, and if you want to condition anything with those, it was, do you, what do you want, if anything, to condition with the driveway spacing and street trees? And it sounds like there's at least four, maybe five of you, I don't know, that are amenable to the idea of counting 26 in the, or the 38 with the 26 mitigation trees, or 26 additional trees. I don't even want to call them mitigation trees, because that's not really what's being proposed.
Yeah.
It's just 26 additional trees to be planted. That meet, that meet the requirements of the mitigation trees.
Yes.
Right?
Okay, I know everybody's tired. All right.
I, can I offer this one thing? I think what would be something of a solution and kind of a compromise is that if we do want to put something in the driveway thing, I don't think we need to put the spacing between the driveways. What I think what we need what I think what we need to do is just have a condition, if you guys want to have street trees 30 feet on the perimeter, is that in between the driveways, we just need to have enough soil space to make that occur. So I think that was all we need to do. But I think what you could do is some driveways might be 24 feet, some driveways might be 16 feet, some might be 18 feet. But as long as it gets that, the street tree spaced, I think we're going to still get there. And we can work with that in construction plan.
Yeah, that works. Okay.
But I'm going to hold them to it. So if there's two 24-foot driveways, they're going to have to somehow separate them.
They can do that, that's the nodding. Does that, does that sound good, acceptable to the rest of the commissioners?
Yeah, I just, I'd like what Chris was telling us, if Emily could just go down her list real quick and tell it what she doesn't have answers to or needs. I mean, I'm, my perspective, I'm ready to.
Yeah.
The answer, right, not a period board.
Yeah.
But I just think the staff needs clear direction from us as to what we want.
Okay, Emily?
Okay, so we're going with the applicant's proposed 38 trees. I think one of them is going to be an alternate tree, because one of them's dead. That would be on our, in our tree covenant, as well as 26 additional newly planted trees. And I'm still, so there's the two tracks we recommended, but then I'm a little confused as to whether we're going to extend the tract along the north property line to the east or not. So that, like that, what the woman from the public mentioned about kind of a green belt thing. I know they had some concerns about the lot size, but again, the, you know, the, if you lost a lot and made them wider rather than deeper, that could still be accommodated, I think, so I don't, I'm not sure where we fell on that. So that's the first thing.
They said, I thought they said no on the track.
Yeah.
For the north side, but, but yes, on 10 and 11.
Yes.
Okay.
Those two lots.
Yeah, I think the decision was no on that. The consensus from the commissioners.
Okay, and then the fire turnarounds, leaving, leaving the paving on the private property, but putting in the curb planter strip and street trees once the subdivision to the south develops, and this applicant paying half of that, all of it, I don't know. And then would we put that drain in so that we don't get the sheet flow?
Okay, so does that, does that answer Commissioner Pullen's concerns if they leave that being placed, but put back the curves? It does.
Yeah, because then we're not trespassing on the private property to touch it.
Okay.
Yeah, but the draining needs to happen.
It would only be work in the right way.
Okay. As long as the drain happens. Okay.
Okay, and then who's paying for it?
Yeah, we'd need an engineering estimate, and it'd be 50% paid by Mac, and then the other 50% would be paid in the future. I mean, that's what was being recommended.
And I was, I was opposed to that. I was opposed to a future developer having to pay for this concern, for this, for that repair. I was hoping that they would take care of it on their own.
Would be more equitable to share.
I'm kind of with Commissioner.
I am too.
Okay, and then the driveways, so I think what Kelly was saying is that you would require a sufficient amount of soil space. Not entirely sure how we determine that, because the sufficient amount is actually much more than it would probably ever be supplied. But, so we'd be basically shrinking the driveways down from 24 feet to something less to provide, you know, adequate amount to put a street tree in. Is that what we've landed on?
I thought I heard Mac say 10 feet. I don't know if you can ask or not, but I thought I heard him say 10 feet. If we could reduce the size down to 10 feet, they would have all the space they need.
10-foot wide driveways?
In, in between.
If I understood Kelly's suggestion correctly, the suggestion was to require a certain spacing between street trees, and they would just have to fit the driveways in between that. So the driveway widths would vary depending on lot configuration, but the trees would be spaced at regular intervals along the road frontage.
Yeah, the applicant kept asking to meet the code if they want a strict reading of that, it's a tree every 30 feet, and then the driveways are going to have to fall in between that. And I think it's going to be a little bit problematic, but.
Well, you need enough soil space for the tree to grow, though.
Can I allow Garrett to come back up or?
I don't know, this one's one of the rails a little bit.
Yes.
Well, I wouldn't characterize this as off the rails, I think this is actually pretty productive. But at any rate, we're fine with what Kelly laid out, and we're fine with the condition requiring enough soil space to have a viable tree. That's all I wanted to say.
Right, okay. Hey, Emily?
I think the last piece I had was just that one thing I brought up that I had forgotten out of the code, which is to have a gate on the Bornstead roadside, which shouldn't be an issue, that's what our code says, but I just need to make sure it gets into the final order.
Got a lot of thumbs up in the room.
Okay. That's, I think, all I can think of. Kelly, is there anything else that you can think of that we don't have clarity on?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, Tracy's bringing up the wall height.
Yeah.
I would rather just make that one, I mean, if we're going to allow retaining walls to exceed the height on, what is it, three lots? I'm not concerned about the tracks.
11, like.
27 is going, that portion's going away and becoming a track, though, right? So those other three lots, I would just like to make it a condition that the final height determination is determined by the city engineer during construction plan review. And that way, if it has to go to eight, eight feet and one inch or nine feet, as long as Kurt McLeod, you know, our engineer signs off on that, then I'm good with it. Because I don't want to bring that back as variance to you guys to go foot higher or something.
Okay, and then I guess the last thing is it's, it sounds like, so, I mean, we're aware that our, our development code supersedes the fire code. This was a recommendation from the fire marshal. I don't feel comfortable going against it, but you guys can certainly make that decision. I just need to know that that's the decision we're making.
They said 12, they said 12%.
Yeah.
And we're 15, that's within code.
Legally, that's what we were told. It's 10%, and our cuts is 15%, and they're proposing 12%.
Well, the fire marshal's 10%, our code book is 15%.
Correct.
And they're offering 12, which is within.
So, yeah.
So I approve.
So do I have to ask each one of these things of the commissioners?
No.
No, I, you know, Chris can give us a good motion language. I think I would be asking for a motion to approve the subdivision per the conditions of approval in the staff report with the modifications that were covered by the planning commission.
We just discussed.
Yeah, because you want to give that to us?
I think we need to close the public hearing officially first, though.
I'm going to close the public hearing, I say that.
Right, it was moved by Commissioner Wegener and seconded by Commissioner Maiden to close the hearing at 10:15.
Yeah, do you want to just do A's or?
I'm sorry, can I see for the folks that are online, thumbs up, thumbs down, close? Okay.
That's all I is, okay.
All right.
And then you can go straight into a motion on the decision if you'd like.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
I took the last one.
I move to accept the, another language, and I'm tired. What did we agree to, we're accepting the, somebody's going to have to help me.
Let me suggest, I think what you're trying to say is that you would like to move to approve the application based on the findings and conditions of approval in the staff report as amended in discussions, the discussions with staff.
I would like to move a direct quote from Chris.
And I would like to.
Yes, I'd like to move, thank you.
I would like to second the direct quote.
On and seconded by Commissioner Lee.
You want to do a individual role on this? Okay, Commissioner Wegener?
I.
Commissioner Maiden?
I.
Commissioner Lee?
I.
Commissioner Pullen?
I.
Vice Chair McLean Wenzel?
I.
You better get on that plane, Commissioner Lee.
I got to get going. All went well.
Well, I want to thank the applicant for working with us.
Thank you guys. Have a good night.
All right.
Thank you.
10, 18, 10, 17. Me and this.